I would like to call the special school board meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, will you please take the role?
Yes. Ms. Alonso Diaz, here. Ms. Campos.
Present.
Ms. Knox.
Here.
Mr. Dix.
Here.
Ms. Martorano.
Here.
Ms. Norris.
Here.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Dix, so moved.
Campus, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Board members, please cast your votes.
Martorano, yes.
The vote is approved 6-0. We have one item on our agenda for this special session. This item is public hearing to establish the FY 2025 property tax rate pursuant to Iowa Code 24.2A. The public hearing is required as part of the district's certified budget. The notice provided to each resident shows the maximum total property taxes the district will adopt as part of the certified budget, which will be adopted by April 30. The board secretary is hereby directed to enter any written comments into the record of this public hearing. For those in attendance, thank you for being here today. We value your input, and we are glad that you are here, and we are interested in hearing your comments. If you are planning on speaking, please fill out the form on the side table, including your name and address, and hand it to the board secretary. Your names will be called in order received. Each speaker will have a maximum of five minutes. Your public comments will be considered as part of the district's final budget decisions. As a reminder, board members are present to listen to and receive these comments, but will not engage in dialogue or respond to questions during this meeting, but may address issues that arise at a future board meeting. We are ready to proceed. The public hearing will come to order. Ms. Rios, is there anyone wishing to speak to item B1 or wanting to submit a written comment?
Yes, there is. First up, I'd like to call Arthur Arnett. You may approach the podium.
Yeah, I was wanting to comment mainly on being a property owner in Des Moines. Having spent 48 years in Des Moines, and now 80 years of age, and each month I spend $99 to support the public schools out of my property tax. And my question is, isn't there a way you can more equitably put that across everyone that uses the school system? I used the two and a half years of my life, okay? I've spent a lot of money on it. And I would like to see more equity, not just homeowners, but the people that actually use the school, be involved in supporting the school system. Also, I'd like to see it more conservative. Back when I graduated, we still had Bible reading and prayer in schools. We had flag, you know, doing the flag each morning, this type of thing. And now, you know, I've been to Vietnam and fought socialism, communism, and unfortunately, a lot of that's being taught to our kids, and I'd like to see that taken out of there as well. But especially in the taxes, I'd just like to see that more equitable across the board of everybody that uses the school.
Sorry, if you could please state your address for the record.
Yes, it's 3922 Amherst Street, Des Moines, 50313.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Next up is Sandra Blessing.
Your name and address, please. Thank you.
Sandra Blessing, 3933 10th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. I moved into my house in 2009 after living in Waterloo for 15 years. Before that, I lived in Des Moines. My son went to Des Moines Public Schools. Since 2009, my taxes in 2009 were $1,642 a year. In 2022, they are now at $2,820. That's almost $1,200 a year increase, I mean, over the period of 13 years. That's how much it's increased. From what I understand, Iowa ranks 42 among all 50 states with the highest property taxes. I want to know why. Also, here's a quote that I'd like to ask or put out there. Why am I paying taxes on my wages, then paying sales tax to spend my money that was already taxed, then paying property taxes after I already paid a sales tax on said property? I'm 72 years old and still working full-time, so I can afford to live in my home. It seems like every year, taxes go up. We're not given really a good reason why. I know everything's going up: groceries, food, I mean, food, medical supplies, everything's going up. We have to find a way in our budget to make our budget work for us. I expect the school board and the state of Iowa to work for us to at least find an equitable way of pushing the taxes out to everybody who uses public and private facilities like... We give tax credits to a lot of companies, some to build companies here in Iowa, like, you know, Google is building a new facility out in Earlham, I think. And are they getting a tax credit to build there? I just feel it's very unfair to put all the burden on the property tax or the property owners here in Polk County. I just feel that taxes are just getting too absorbent. Everything's getting overly inflated, and the minute you raise one thing, everything else goes up. So, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Blessing.
Thank you. Next up is Art Whitmack.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Superintendent, welcome to Des Moines. I'm Art Whitmack, President of the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa, and I reside at 14265 Amherst Court in Clive. The Taxpayers Association is a century old. We are nonpartisan, and that is getting more and more difficult to achieve as people become more divided. This is a time when we need to come together and discuss those things that the public sector provides, which are absolutely essential to our communities. They provide us not only a higher quality of life, but they also provide us with the very basic necessities we need. Education is one of those. Nothing is more infuriating if I were sitting at your table in September, when the property tax bills come out and everybody goes ballistic. Where have they been for the last five years? Where have they been? I was at the Polk County Supervisor's meeting today at 9:30. Many people who are employed can't make that meeting, and they don't have a voice at the table. I commend you for holding your meetings at this hour. House File 718 that was passed last year was passed by Republicans and Democrats with only one dissenting vote, one dissenting vote out of the entire legislature. And I think it was an expression on behalf of those constituents represented there that we need a dialogue on property taxes, and that dialogue can't take place just in one night. So, House File 718 created this unbelievable... Shashank, I don't know how you do it. And it's given a lot of people misinformation. It's tried to provide clarity and transparency, and has done just the opposite. Our phone has been ringing off the hook since this came out. I have a property tax statement from one of our members in Des Moines, and the Des Moines rate for the schools, let me make sure I get the right line, is going down, according to this, 17%. I think if somebody saw that and got their bill a year from now, they're going to be very disappointed. It's inaccurate. And if you put down your, and we've got a calculator that will assist that through the Department of Management, if you put down your property specifically, you will find out that that's not a good, a good number. So, all I'm doing tonight is saying, let's have that dialogue. We want to be part of the solution, not the problem. And for those people who are listening on TV tonight, get down here, participate in this. Nothing makes me more irritated than when one of my members calls up and says, "How did you let this happen?" And I simply respond, "No, how did you let it happen? Get involved." So, again, Dr. Roberts, welcome. It's a wonderful system. I thought your comments earlier today about the students today are not the students of yesterday. I'm encouraged by what I hear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmack.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers that I have for today. Anybody else? Final call for speakers? Okay, yeah, if you would like to fill out the... Make it to the podium, and then you can fill it out afterwards. Name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Lonigan. Address is 6705 3 Lakes Parkway, Des Moines, 50320. So, recently retired, and I'm going to become very active at these things because I have the time to do so. But I want to address, I got your thing with the proposals for the taxes. So, according to my math, we're talking about, just for the schools, Des Moines schools, we're looking at an increase from last year in money of $1,744,647. The economy is contracting or shrinking. There's many employers out there that are actually cutting hours on employees for this, that, or the other reason. And I'm kind of wondering why, if the economy's doing this, along with, you know, kids that were at school choice thing that went through, you know? So, why is it we're spending more or needing to spend more money than what we had last year? But, you know, that's a question, but I'd like to just point something out. On the backs of the property owners, you know, agreeing with what some of these guys earlier had to say, we're talking about a proposal of this thing, school, city, county, going up by $30,902,688. Now, I did a little bit of homework via the internet, and I found out there was 88,894 homes in Des Moines. That's not the suburbs, that's Des Moines. So, if you do the math, and you take that $30 million, and you divide it by the number of homes, let's say everything's equal, and we know that's not the case because it's different property valuations, right? But if it were, it's $347.63 to each home household in Des Moines to cover all these three layers: the school, the city, and the county. I've lived in many states. Most of my time has been in the military or military affiliated. And I recently came, four years ago, I moved to Des Moines from California. My tax bill on a house that was quite a bit bigger and quite a bit more in value was $329 a month. Here in Des Moines, I am paying almost $200 more in property taxes each month for a house that's smaller and not of the value. So, I'm just, I'm still puzzled. That's why we, you know, we're not contracting, we're not following the economy, but we're just growing and growing. At some point, you know, I consider myself in the top 70% of wage earners, but at some point, it's going to be breaking the backs of the average, the household in Des Moines. I also found out the median, somewhere around there, and the median income, according to census.gov for Des Moines, is $74,208 approximate. But, you know, how can they afford high property taxes? And things are just going up and up and up. And with the inflation, you know, it's a big concern. I just wanted to voice my opinion here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Kathy Elliott.
I'm Kathy Elliott. I've been in Des Moines for a long time, and the current home that we own has been since 1994. I live at 3843 43rd Street. In those years, through our struggles of being able to earn enough money to raise our family and to be in this city, we would sometimes have to pay our property taxes a little bit late. That's life. To now, for me, I ran an in-home childcare business in my home, and I closed that in 2019. That was a plan I had to put into action five years prior. What I wanted to do is not what I'm getting to do, but that's okay. I'm being asked in a lot of different directions to help out with my family. So currently, I'm unemployed, and that means that we are living on a one household income. And as my husband is in his 60s, and I am almost 60, I am looking at the next five years as we're going to be home poor. It is not your fault that our state government chooses to A, wait till almost Congress is done to finally release your budget. That is not your fault. That is not your fault that our government is holding lots of money in reserves and won't release it for the schools across the state. Not your fault. I want our teachers to be earning a good, living wage, not a struggling wage, not $40,000 a year. They need to be earning more than that. You do what you can with the budget you're given. Part of that budget comes from our property taxes. Renters, I am making the assumption, that through the money that they are paying, the exorbitant amount of rent renters are paying right now, over $1,000 to rent a two-bedroom home, maybe a small three-bedroom home, they can't afford that rent. And if I am thinking this correctly, that part of that rent, because that person collecting that rent money as income, that should be coming to our schools. But they can't afford more in rent. My children are drowning. We're drowning, and I don't want to be drowning. All I can say is, I hope that you can look at the budget. You can find a way to not raise your portion of what comes from our property taxes. We need to do better. And as a gentleman spoke before, I do appreciate having an evening meeting. It's been a long time since I've been at a Des Moines Public School meeting, many years. But what you do is important. What I'm doing is important, helping with my grandchildren, helping to care for my mom. I don't have extra money. I just don't. And I'm hearing the other people saying that, too. They don't have the extra money. I don't know what we can do except to get involved, get our butts up there to Capitol Hill and tell them, "They're holding you hostage. They're holding this city hostage. They're holding this whole state hostage by not releasing those extra funds to help offset the cost of what is going to probably happen to our property tax." So I just ask you to sincerely look at that budget. I know our teachers need raises. I know they need to be paid fairly, not just the teachers, the janitors, the people working in the kitchen, serving our children their food, giving them their breakfast, giving them that lunch, the after-school care programs. All of that needs to be well-funded. I don't know what we can do, but please, look closely at what you're doing with the property taxes. And if there isn't some other way to go after somewhere because you need help to get there, then let us know. Be transparent. Tell us what we can do. You give me an action, and I'm going to follow it. I am that kind of person, and I think there's others here and probably on TV, which I will tell you that the last time I spoke was about the early dismissal. And I spent a lot of time doing research, and I was very passionate, and I had many people who were so thankful I stood up.
30 seconds remaining.
But because of it being televised is why this has taken me this long to come back, because I have stage fright. So, they can probably see it. You may not, but my leg is quivering. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for hearing us, and I really hope that you can consider that we don't want to be home poor. But that's what's going to happen. Nobody's going to buy because they can't afford to live here with the high property taxes, and we're not going to be able to afford our property taxes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers.
Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Shashank, would you like to say anything prior to wrapping up?
Sure. Thanks, Jackie. The only thing I would say is, this property taxes, the notices that have been sent across the state, this is the first year that this is happening. This is something new. Typically, the residents would get the tax bill in September, and that's when they would know what the property tax rate was. This was created to provide transparency. Unfortunately, the communication at the state level, I would say, was probably not as much as it needed to be. So, I have personally been fending multiple calls in the last three, four days as residents of Corame, and I'm going to personally get in touch with everyone whose details I have over here over the next few days and help them understand what is going on. But as a district, we are actually reducing the property tax rate from last year of 15.15 to 14.70. So, the property tax rate is being reduced, and there is a math shown below over here. For a $100,000 property, if your taxes last year were $828, it is going to be $682. So, the property tax dollars are coming down, the rate is coming down. So, the district is extremely mindful as we are levying property tax rate. I just wanted everyone to appreciate and understand that.
So, I guess I kind of have to ask the question, why is the statement inaccurate? So, if as a district, we've made the choice to decrease our property tax number, why are people getting statements not seeing that reflected?
So, I have a statement from one of the Des Moines residents over here, and that statement shows what the current tax rate is, which is 15.15, and what is the proposed tax rate, which is 14.70. And the way it is mentioned for Des Moines Public School, it is also there for the Polk County as well as the Des Moines City. So, these are probably the three largest organizations within the Des Moines which charge property taxes. But for Des Moines Public School, it is reducing from 15.15 to 14.70.
Where is the SERP? Just help me understand, does it total 100? I'm just trying to think through, where is everybody decreasing their tax rates, or where are the increases happening in the total pie?
So, the rate is reducing, but what is happening is the property tax valuation is increasing. If your property is appreciating in value, and for Des Moines, as a whole, it is appreciated by 6.5%, that is where the property tax dollars could negatively get impacted. But as a rate, we are not increasing. We're actually reducing the rates.
Any other questions?
Point of clarification.
Point of clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Shashank, certainly, I appreciate your presence here in providing sort of the expertise to clarify for our residents and property owners, because we truly value not only their partnership, but their quality of life. For their benefit, if you can, and for our benefit, to just restate, while the property taxes are not increasing from the Des Moines Public Schools, the valuation, so, when there is an appreciation or an increase in someone's property value, then you mentioned they're likely to see a negative impact. Does that translate into then they are likely to see an increase in their tax, property taxes?
So, I have not done a calculation by property, Dr. Roberts, but in the statement which has been done by the Department of Management, they have tried to reflect what is the taxes a resident would pay for a $100,000 property on the current tax rate and the proposed tax rate. And if you look into that, there is a reduction, which Art had mentioned, of around 17%, going from $828 to $682 for a $100,000 property.
That is helpful. So, just again, simplistic translation. Des Moines Public Schools, we are not increasing property taxes. We are reducing property taxes.
Correct. That is accurate, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you. And I think in closing, probably to the public as well, and Mr. Whitmack from the Taxpayers Association, it sounds like we'd all really value from a conversation where people come together and look at what seems to be a problem that's really a hardship on a lot of people that live in Des Moines, because we're making sacrifices, too. Great. Thank you. Any last questions? Okay, without objection, the meeting is adjourned at 6:00 PM. I would like to call the special school board meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. This is the second special meeting. Ms. Rios, will you please take the role?
Certainly. Ms. Alonso Diaz, here.
Certainly. Ms. Alonso Diaz, here. Ms. Campos.
Present.
Mr. Dix.
Here.
Ms. Knox.
Here.
Ms. Martorano.
Here.
Ms. Norris.
Here.
We have Cora.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Alonso is so moved.
Campos, second.
Alonso, we have a motion by Alonso and a second by Campos. Board members, please cast your votes.
Martorano, yes.
The vote is approved, 6-0. We have two items on our agenda for this separate special session. The first item is B1, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year End, June 30, 2023. I'll turn it over to Shashank Arora, our CFO, to introduce our audit partner for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanted to thank RSM and Mr. Kevin Smith, partner of RSM, and his team for the cooperation during the entire process of audit. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Business and Finance Team for the hard work that they have put in into this lovely 170-page document. And here I would like to add that we, as a district, realized that this manual process is probably not the most efficient process. And in one of the earlier board meetings, I had mentioned that we are looking to automate the process. So this process, we have largely automated, working with the help of RSM and team. Historically, majority of the ACFOR, as we are called, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, was prepared by RSM. And this is the first year that we have tried to automate it. It's not 100% done. Hopefully, it should be done 100%. So this manual process, which we are doing, so far, can be avoided. So I wanted to thank RSM and the Business and Finance Team, my entire team, which has really worked not only to close the audit, wrap it up in a very good fashion, but also try to automate the ACFOR. With that, I'll introduce Kevin Smith, partner of RSM. And for everyone, there is a deck which is in the board docs. So if you can turn over to that thing, we can then share. It's not coming over there.
Do you mind if I use your?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me here to go through the results from the fiscal year 2023 audit. The audit has been complete. We met with the Audit Committee last week and went through the audit in a little bit more detail than we will tonight. But certainly, I want to, I'll go through the presentation and then happy to answer any questions that you might have. On the slides that you, the first slide just talks about that we were engaged to perform an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. The main purpose of that audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements and whether they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The opinions that were issued by RSM were unmodified opinions, so that is the, that's a clean opinion, the highest level of assurance that you can receive as a part of an audit process.
Kevin, I could just ask.
Moment. I want to make sure we all have the presentation in front of us. Is this the item that you're referring to that's?
No, it will be.
Okay.
It's on the board docs.
Okay.
This is the presentation.
Just, I want to make sure that the public has the opportunity to view it as well. Is that something that Rosie or Kyle can access?
I think Kyle should have access. It's on the board docs. And he's trying to figure out which documents to actually share. So Rosie, if you can help him, that'll be super helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you can go ahead and start. You want to keep going, and then we'll just catch up a little bit.
Sure.
No, the other one's cool. Yes, thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
So as I mentioned, clean opinions on the financial statements. There was one new GASB standard that was adopted by the district this year, GASB 96, subscription-based information technology arrangements. So similar to last year, where the district implemented the new lease standards, this relates to more IT subscription type of arrangements. You can see the impact here. We noted was about an $800,000 liability that was recorded in addition to $1.2 million of right-to-use intangible assets. So not a huge impact, but that impact is noted there. Within the financial segments, there are certain estimates that are included. So we've listed that, those out here on the slide. We do look at all of those as a part of the audit process, and we're able to conclude that all of those estimates were reasonable. And we test those in a variety of ways by involving actuaries, in some cases, and other testing for some of the other estimates. Just to highlight some of the things that you'll see in the letter to the board on Slide 4, there were no audit adjustments that had to be proposed as a part of the audit process. So the information that was given to us from Shashank and his team was accurate to the best of our knowledge and didn't have to adjust those records. There was one item that was reported as an uncorrected misstatement. There was an immaterial item that we did discuss that in detail with the Audit Committee. Overall, no disagreements with management or difficulties performing the audit. We had full cooperation from everyone, had access to all of the information we needed to have access to. If there were any of those items that arose, we would be reporting those in writing to you all. Another part of an audit in accordance with government auditing standards is looking at internal controls. We don't issue an opinion on internal controls, but we do report back to you any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that are identified throughout the audit process. There was no, there were no material weaknesses that were reported. The only item that you'll see there reported as a significant deficiency was the cyber event that occurred during the fiscal year. The one thing I will point out there is that the ERP, we did get comfortable that the ERP system, which is where all the financial information was housed, was not impacted by that event. So that did help in keeping that from rising to the level of something more material, like a material weakness. So it isn't that highest level. It is just a significant deficiency, but it is something that's important enough that we put that in writing to you all.
Because you call it a significant deficiency, does that mean that there is a corrective action that you're recommending?
Their management put together a corrective action plan, and that does get filed along with the compliance reports. So if the granting agencies wanted to see that corrective action plan, it would be available.
Great, thank you.
Another part of our audit is what we call the single audit, and so that's the audit of the federal grant programs. There are certain programs that are looked at in detail each year. Your most significant programs are tested at least every three years. The three programs that were looked at in fiscal year 23 was the Child Nutrition Cluster, Head Start, and then the ESR Funds. Those ESR dollars have been tested for the past several years, and that's because the federal government designated that a high-risk program. So when they do that, we have to test those funds every year. So each of those programs in total accounted for about 66% of the total federal dollars that the district spent during fiscal year 23. And each of those programs did receive an unmodified or a clean opinion on our testing of those programs. So again, the highest level of assurance that you can receive from an audit. There was only one item reported as a significant deficiency over the Child Nutrition Program, and it had to do with some, the process of submitting and reviewing some of the meal count reports had to be changed because of the cyber incident. And there was a lack of evidence of certain reviews were taking place before those were being submitted. So we reported that as a deficiency. We didn't note any issues with the actual reports that were submitted, but just the controls around reviewing those weren't adequately documented. And again, with that one as well, there is a corrective action plan. And then the final slide here just shows the history of the results from the district's single audit, just to show that there has been really few findings reported over the past 10 years, which does help keep your designation as a low-risk oddity for single audit purposes. If you had material weaknesses or material instances of noncompliance, you would rise to a level of a high-risk oddity. And because you have not had a history of that, you're able to maintain that low-risk designation. And that is all that we have in the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Board colleagues, what questions do you have?
I have one. You know, audits are my favorite thing because that's what I do for a living. Shashank, on the single audits, the one that we have to do every three years, do you guys keep smaller audits, like on a yearly basis on those?
So single audits, there is, the auditors get to decide which audit they want to pick. And for the last few years, ESR has always bubbled up to the top because of the large influx of dollars that we have had. And I think Child Nutrition, as well as Head Start, has been audited this time after multiple years. I don't remember when it was last audited. I've been the CFO over here for the last four years, at least for the last four years. They have not been audited. So we don't decide on it. We maintain our policies, procedures, and internal controls, but the audit is decided by the audit firm as to which ones they want to audit. Does that help? Thank you.
Yes.
I do want to point out, actually, that I, on the Audit Committee, I did ask about Title I and Title I when that is in the three-year rotation, because it wasn't audited this year, and it sounds like potentially that's coming.
It would be audited next year, correct?
So, and because we're expanding the utilization of Title I pretty significantly, making sure that there's clarity on the rules. And on Page 167, there was one issue that was addressed with regards to Title I use. Other questions? I have a question that's both asking you to teach me and a question. And that's regarding the solvency ratio. So, and our debt. So maybe I'll separate the two. So on the debt, I think it looks like we've done a great job of paying down our principal payments on existing bonds, therefore reducing our interest expense. And I'm wondering if there are any ways to continue to accelerate that and what pot of money that actually comes from. So is that general fund, or is that addition? Where does that money come from when we're paying down our debt?
Thanks for asking the question, Jackie, because as we all know, school finance is kind of complex based there. So the money, so we have, there are two kinds of bonds which any school district can issue. The ones that we have issued is called revenue bonds. And the source of payment for revenue bonds is save, so it does not come from general fund. So if I had to talk with my best memory, we typically get around $34 to $36 million every year as save dollars. And out of that $34 to $36 million, 22 to 24 are used to pay down the principal and interest on revenue bonds. And the balance is used by our operational team for the different projects that they do at school buildings, and in case we want to purchase buses for the students, or if we want to purchase laptops and all those kind of different things. Does that help?
It does, and I guess for a district that is slightly cash-strapped, I'd actually ask the opposite, which is if we eased back on our principal payments, is that a strategy that would ever be considered?
Sorry, let me understand your question. When you say ease back, that means paying less of principal than what we are owed?
Correct.
So Jackie, these are all governed by the bond covenants. If we
You can't break the covenant.
You can't break the covenant. If you break, it's bad for the district. And when we go for any future bonds for our S&amp;P rating, we will get an unhealthy rating, and that'll drive up the interest cost that we borrow. Unfortunately, we can't do that. Or we should not do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Makes total sense. The other question is on the solvency ratio. I think I ask you this every year. Because we are sitting at like 32, 33%, which far exceeds what IASB recommends as a safe solvency ratio. And yet, I'm not sure how do we, we should be at, 15% is more than healthy in terms of a solvency ratio. Are there ways that we can adjust that number so it's a little bit more in line with where we'd like it to be? And how does one do that if you don't have the enrollment? Is it connected to enrollment?
So typically, cash reserve levy is what drives to a large extent your solvency ratio. And the guidance is that you cannot levy cash reserve levy if your solvency ratio is in excess of 20%. This is basically the cash that you hold. So the cash sources are multiple, but you are, your limitation is the spending authority.
Deal spending authority.
Correct. So that is what is driving how you spend down. So our cash reserve levy has been reducing over a period of time, but it would be quite a few years out till when it will not come back to 20% limit, before which we can even think of levying cash reserve levy.
And other than spending authority, which is directly connected to enrollment?
Correct.
Are there any other ways to impact that number?
The cash reserve levy? Not really, because the money that we get even from sales tax does not go to calculate the cash reserve levy. It is only the general fund money that is used from there.
Great, thank you. Thank you for teaching me also.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Any final comments?
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much for your hard work. Really appreciate it. And Shashank, I know that there are citizen volunteers on the committee, so please thank them as well.
I will do that, absolutely.
Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, before I bring forth my recommendation, thank you, Kevin Smith, for your participation and support. Madam Chair, board and community, it should be noted that each year since, I believe it was 2007, the district has received the International Award, the ASMO International Award, which is a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. This lasts for a period of one year. And we've also received the same award for the 2022-23 school year. And I have the utmost confidence that, given our commitment to fiscally sung budgeting, we will receive this again. So certainly want to express gratitude. And finally, this lengthy process, and one that we have not fully automated, we are committed to make sure that we get to this place of full automation as we work towards improving efficiencies as a district. And so I'm proud of the work that you're doing, recognizing that there's work to do. With that said, Madam Chair, I recommend that the board accept the annual comprehensive report, the ACFOR, for the year ending June 30, 2023.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Dix, so moved.
Knox, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Knox. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your vote.
Martorano, yes.
The vote is approved, 6-0. The next item on our agenda is B2, Approval of Vendor for District Strategic Plan. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Approximately, I would say about six weeks ago, we brought to the board's attention, I brought to the board's attention, certainly the board has also been an integral part via thought leadership of ensuring that as a district, particularly an organization of our size, that we explore the importance of having thoughtful and prudent strategic plan in over a period of five years. Receiving that charge, we have actually authored and offered an RFP, a Request for Proposal, and received a lot of interest, I should say, both locally and nationally. Committee, a subcommittee of district leaders and school staff also reviewed 14 requests for proposals from very credible and noteworthy consulting groups. As of last week, we landed on a selection of one of those groups that we believe will be able to provide us with the support and guidance to get us to a point where we will have a strategic plan processed, with a plan being implemented no later than January 1 of 2025. This will be a comprehensive five-year plan. Certainly, the board and members of the community Certainly, the Board and members of the community will be integrally involved in this process as well. With that said, I am bringing to the Board as a recommendation that you approve the new leaders' organization as the vendor for the district's five-year strategic plan.
We have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Knox will move.
Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Knox and a second by Alonso. Is there any discussion or does anyone have questions?
Could you just, just curious, was this a decision the Cabinet made or kind of how did you, who was at the table when it came to vetting this? I'm really excited that we're moving in this direction, just kind of interested in the process to land on this vendor.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. So, yes, we certainly wanted to make sure that we had a diverse group, and, and by diverse, I meant diversity of thought as well as positions. And so, while the group of individuals included members of the Cabinet as well as non-Cabinet members, we also included AEA representation to make sure that we maintained the level of objectivity around reviewing each of our proposals before we landed and arrived at this. To give you a little bit of insight into the process, after the review, of course, we selected, I believe, somewhere between three to five finalists and had final interviews with each of those. Some of them were virtual, and we also had one group that flew in from, I believe it was Florida for an in-person interview. After the final interviews, we certainly deliberated and had a blind or objective vote, and we subsequently landed on this vendor. I must share as well for the Board and, and communities' consumption that we consider a number of factors. One, we wanted to make sure that this was an organization that had demonstrated the ability, having done some of similar work with a district of our size or even larger. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that this was a, a group of consultants who understood our context, and where there was a paucity of understanding, they were willing to come and spend time in our communities to understand fully. And thirdly, we also wanted to make sure that this was a vendor who was affordable. And so, those are really serious considerations, and this is certainly one vendor that is, the, the final amount is much lower than what we had asked the Board to consider as a ceiling for our cost.
And just clarifying, they're going to deliver a final product, is that right?
That is correct. So, there are two, two reactions to that. In addition to this particular vendor delivering a final product, a, a part of their contract will include ongoing support over a period of time. So, it's not going to be a one-and-done, but they will be there to provide ongoing support.
Other questions? I have a few. To, to that point, does that mean that there will be some type of dashboard or metrics? So, measurement to see how the superintendent and staff are doing to goal?
Absolutely, yes, Madam Chair. So, there will be a dashboard. As a matter of fact, our data and assessment team, highly technical, is one of the questions that they push to make sure that we will have some compatibility with whatever dashboard that they're using, what platform they're using with ours. And so, the goal is, once we implement, to have ongoing monitoring where we will have, I believe we were going to call them maybe power users, where a certain group of individuals will have ongoing access to the dashboard. And that allows us to, to provide not only the Board but our community with sort of ongoing updates about where we are and how we're progressing.
And sorry, I have an additional question. I didn't have a chance to catch it before. I think I was under the impression that this was going to be done, you were aiming to have it done in August, so we would walk into the school year with it. And so, there seems to be a change, and I'm just curious how that came about.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think I was out on a limb with that very ambitious and aggressive goal of having it ready to go in August, but having consulted with members of the Cabinet and also every single one of our consulting groups said that it was not likely for us to have a quality product. And so, we compromised and landed on, on January 1st, so second semester implementation.
Then, my follow-up to that is, I think we've done a lot of listening to the public in the past year. The Board's done, we've been out in the community twice, got a lot of feedback, I think, surveys from DMPS, there's just so much feedback. How will you incorporate that? And I don't want to say prevent, but try not to go back in the community and instead use the feedback that we've gotten from our community to inform the strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, it's clear to me that our community enjoys interacting with several stakeholders here in the modern public schools, but I also recognize, right, that there is the reality of a, a listening session fatigue, and we don't want to go back into the community. So, one of the asks that we had of all of our final vendors is, what was their willingness or appetite to utilize the raw data that we have? For example, from the Board, listening sessions. We also have our reimagining education work being led by our Associate Superintendent Smith and others. They've also done some of that work to glean from stakeholders what their value, what their beliefs are. And so, this vendor is one of several who committed to utilizing the data that we currently have, but also finding spaces where they can still have maybe less intrusive and less burdensome versions of some listening sessions to gather additional data.
Great. Thank you, Board members. Other questions? Okay, and so just to clarify, the, we approved $300,000 and now we're giving additional $100,000 as the ceiling.
It's not an additional $100,000. We approved $300,000. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that clarifying question. We have agreed to, if this vendor is approved, to pay up to and no more than $100,000. Remember, we were also using Essar's funds, which means that there's a savings of at least $200,000 of the Essar's funds.
How much is it going to cost? Sorry, I'm a little confused.
So, when we came to the Board previously, recognizing that we were going to see a variation from each of the vendors, and having looked at the market, we realized that working with a credible organization around preparing a strategic plan can cost you anywhere from $50,000 to-
Okay.
Up to, right, $300,000. We decided that we wanted to have as a ceiling $300,000, really anticipating that some of the vendors who responded at RFP, when we looked at their costs, many of them ranged between about $270,000 and much lower. This vendor, the actual cost is somewhere around $80,000. However, we want to build in a cushion for things like travel or additional work, and so we're asking for up to, not to exceed $100,000.
Thank you for your smart financial stewardship. Appreciate it. Okay, Board members, please cast your votes.
Marterano, yes.
The vote is approved 6-0. Thank you for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate you all. This meeting is adjourned at 7:26, 27. Thank you. 6:26. We're going to take a brief break, five minutes, and move into our work sessions. We will first receive a presentation on our FY '25 budget, then we will work on our goals and guardrails, then we will address the Board vacancy. So, five-minute break. Everybody, please come back fast so we can keep powering through the work. Thank you. We are going to start in one minute. Matt, I think, is it just Shashank that's joining you?
And Dave Berger.
And Dave Berger.
He will be back in just a-
Okay. Board colleagues, while that's happening, hey, Jenna, Anna, Patrick, Maria. I printed out two things, and I'm going to hand them out. The first are all of the Board budget questions from last year, because some of the information we already have answers to, and I thought that would be helpful to look at that list as a reference. And if, and then I have 2024 budget questions I've received so far from each of you. So, you'll have that, it'll be your opportunity to look at it, to write additional questions down. I think we really want to make sure, as there's questions for budget, that we are giving the staff enough time to respond to them. So, I'm going to hand that out in just one moment. Shashank, I think we're turning it over to you. I think we're going to try and do this in 45 minutes. What do you think?
From my side, I just need 10 minutes.
Okay, I've heard that before, but. Let's try 20, and, you know, and also I say that because I, this is, you know, Board colleagues, we don't have a lot of time to ask questions, and so I do want to make sure though that we also, you know, don't feel rushed so people have time for questions. So, Shashank, we're going to try for 20 minutes.
Perfect, great. Thank you. Good afternoon. So, the first item I, I wanted to share, what is the agenda for today? There are two big portions. One is reimagining education and the capital investments, which will be presented by Matt Smith and Dave. And the second portion is cost of doing business, which is what I would be presenting. Just wanted to highlight the timelines again. So, we've had multiple dates, as you can see, so 26th is what we had today, where we are having the work session as well as a public hearing. On 28th, we'll be sending our budget to the register for adoption. This is what is, what has historically been done. The step that was approved today was a new step. So, that will have that information which we've always, always sent to the register that will be published on April 5th. We have a planned work session for April 2nd, and I'm going to request Dr. Roberts to share over here, because this is a topic that we wanted to talk about guardrails and the legislative impacts, and we know where the goals and guardrails are. So, the way at least the two of us had discussed is, should we have this session at all, or should we just present everything on April 16th? And as far as goals and guardrails, I, I'll let Dr. Roberts speak on this. As far as when do we want to come to the Board on goals and guardrails when they have not been finalized, as far as budgeting goes?
Thank you. So, I want to make sure that we, we don't put the cart before the horse, so to speak. I appreciate the question. We are currently in the process of finalizing goals and guardrails. I think what will determine impact on our budget, our budget for fiscal year '25, as well as what kind of resource allocation strategies we need, will be contingent upon when we land on our interim, two things, right? Targets, interim guardrails, interim goals, and then we'll determine that. So, my estimation is probably looking at the Board meeting after our finalized Board goals and guardrails.
So, I think to add to that, and AJ, I see you back there, we're going to strongly push to have the conversation around interims on August 2nd. If you'll be prepared-
April 2nd, Madam Chair?
Why is everybody looking at me like that? Oh, I did? Oh, did I say that? April 2nd, okay, April 2nd.
Yes.
If we can pull that off, AJ, would you be prepared with the interims on April 2nd?
Interim goals, may not be interim guardrails, but I think that still puts us in a really strong position in terms of how we are strategically, financially strategized around our budget.
So, I think we can take one step forward on April 2nd. In addition, I think that there's going to be other Board questions regarding the budget that we could use that April 2nd time for.
Fair enough. And, but, but what I wanted to really highlight over here is, we would not have costing done for the goals and guardrails by the time the budget is being approved by the Board. So, we would have to decide. You want to take over, Dr. Roberts, over here?
Yeah, thank you. So, I think where you're going with that is, one, let me build in what I shared. Before we can even start to think about costing or the cost of doing business as it relates to our goals and guardrails, we need to finalize our goals, guardrails, our interim goals, interim guardrails. I think what Madam Chair is alluding to is whether or not we will be able to have- I think what Madam Chair is alluding to is whether or not we will be able to have our goals and at least interim goals by April 2nd. My response with utmost confidence is yes. I, I think we will need a little bit of a longer runway to finalize our guardrails and interim guardrails. Because we're still having discussions with regards to those. And so my push would be for us to consider our second meeting in the month of May, for us to come back, possibly to think about the cost of doing business. How does that sound feel to you, Shashank?
I'm going to look at Tim, if he's here in the audience. He is there. So I'm, because he'll have to do the heavy lift along with my team. So is May a comfortable timeline or? Okay, perfect.
It's a start. If not, we'll come back to the board again. We want to make sure that we are really being thoughtful about arriving at, again, a budget that truly allows us to have prudent resource allocations in order for us to move steadily towards achieving our goals and guardrails. So let's commit to the last meeting in May. If needed, I will certainly ask for the board's guidance and around whether or not we extend that timeline.
So to say out loud, we pass a budget and then we need to amend the budget.
Thank you, thank you, Jackie. That is, that is very accurate. And as, as you've been involved in the process now, you know that we have the flexibility to amend the budget. In fact, even for FY '24, in the, in the next meeting or the meeting after that, we would come with a proposal to amend the budget for FY '24. So we have the runway to amend it if it is needed. And, and if, since we have a few new board members, let me just explain what that means. Is once the budget is approved, the Department of Education lets us have the timelines up to April of the following year to amend the budget of the current year. So for this year till April 2024, we can amend the budget of FY '24. So in case we are unable, not in case, unfortunately or fortunately because of the delayed, and I shouldn't use the word delay, because of, we have still not finalized our goals and guardrails, we will not have costing done, cost analysis done for any one of them by April 30th, when the board approves the budget. So it'll be done sometime in the second meeting of May. And if we need more runway, Dr. Roberts will be in touch.
Board members, any questions on that?
Other thing I wanted to highlight was the community discussions that we'll be having this year. I would encourage anyone who's listening and whoever is there to please come and attend any of these seven sessions. And two of the sessions are in a foreign language, one is Swahili and the other is Spanish. And we'll also have a virtual session, which will be available on the DMPS site for anyone who's unable to attend. I'm not going to go through that. I'm going to turn it over to Dave and Matt.
And Shashank, for the, for the public sessions, if questions are asked, are the answers, how, where's the transparency around the questions and answers from the sessions? If public wanted to see that?
Thank you for that question, Jackie. So historically, what we have done, and our plan is to do exactly the same this year, unless I hear different from the board, which is as and when we are presenting, we are responding to the questions being asked. Plus, we are making note of the questions being asked. And those questions and the responses are posted on DMPS site.
Great.
So, so as of now, we are planning to follow exactly the same process.
Great. Thank you.
Matt?
Can I borrow that?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
I just got a quick comment on this, on the discussion dates. I know we have the Spanish presentation at Central Campus. Is it possible if we could switch it to a high school that's more recognized? Especially for the Spanish community, because a lot of people don't know where Central Campus is. So we get a lot more people present, do you think? Or is it late to switch that?
I think it is late, very late to switch. And we can definitely evaluate, because even Maria had proposed a location. And so I think between the three of us, we can discuss which location is going to be most suitable for the Spanish speaking community. And then for next year, we can have it exactly there.
Good evening. Thank you again for your time tonight. I will do my level best to be brief in the spirit of brevity. I know, I can't promise you much, but I'll do my very level best. Want to make sure I introduce Dave Berger, Executive Director of Facility and Operations. He is the real brains and the experts behind all of this. And so any questions of specificity or just real expertise, I may lean to Dave. Because that's what leaders do. They look to their, their better angels and the folks that actually know what they're talking about. So what we discussed was, in order to provide you with an idea about reimagining education, what we began with, what are we investing in in FY '24? So what you will see on this particular slide here is specific investments in the education of our system through the lens of facilities and operations. And so if you remember last year, we talked about various investments in safety and security, activities and athletics, and of course preventative maintenance. And we wanted to just add this slide to say what we said we were going to do, we actually are indeed doing in FY '24 in terms of our facility investments. Some of those specific investments, I'd like to point out around safety and security, that's always going to be the number one topic in terms of how are we supporting our students, our staff and our families to feel not only just physically safe, but emotionally saved and spiritually safe, right, professionally safe. And so you'll see some very specific capital projects associated with these themes. And so you're going to see these themes, actually not only in FY '24, but FY '25, FY '26 and some of our future investments. Also want to highlight the activities and athletics and engagement sort of investments of high quality practice fields. It seems to me like we built the MediaCom Stadium years ago. It was just fall. It's just fall that we opened that stadium. And it's an amazing venue. And what we also know is, it's an amazing venue that can be used one team at a time or one activity at a time. And so the investment in high quality athletic practice facilities is now the theme to move forward with in FY '24 and beyond. We made significant investments in prior years to our performing arts spaces, our auditoriums, choral music rooms, things like that. There's more work to do there. But we also know that we have a large percentage of our students that engage in activities and athletics. And we want to make sure that we are giving them the highest quality of athletic facilities to practice in Monday through Thursday, before the big game Friday night, before the marching festival that Saturday. We want to give them those spaces and so that rain and bad weather does not deter folks from getting on those fields. So, and then of course, preventive and maintenance, as you might imagine. Investing in energy efficiency. We want to make sure that we continue to have, I think we might be on our 12th year, Dave. If you have to remind me of our Star Energy Efficiency Award, is it 12, 11?
13th.
13th, 13th year, sorry. Didn't want to neglect it there. But those investments, as you know, are incredibly impactful to the learning of our students because it saves dollars in the energy that we're consuming. And we can put those dollars into student programming and staff compensation. So I thought this slide was fitting because it helped sort of paint the picture of the relationship between capital planning projects and actual facility planning. And what this is meant to represent is our facility plan actually drives which capital projects we are going to invest in and not just the other way around. The other way around would be is that we come up with capital projects that sound good and feel good, but may not necessarily be associated with a facility plan to actually improve outcomes for our students. This is meant to represent the vision and the, of Dave and his team and making sure that we are moving forward with a facilities plan that sees the student experience at the forefront and the student outcomes as the measure of whether or not these investments are actually successful or not. So our facility plan actually drives which capital projects we will invest dollars in in the future. So this is kind of the money slide. There's a lot here. But we thought it important to show the relationship between what is our current facilities plan and the transition into reimagining education. So in our current facilities plan, we are in year four of a five-year plan that was developed in 2019 and began to be implemented in FY '20. You'll see some of those priority investments of HVAC efficiencies, restroom finishes, site improvements, things like that. The supplemental investments are things that we began to add this fiscal year and will add next year because things have happened. And, you know, in the first year of inception of FY '20 of this plan, we've had COVID. We've had loss of enrollment. We've had lots of things happen in our organization that should drive us to step back and say, is the plan still the right plan? Are the investments still the right investments? And so what this slide is meant to represent is, while yes, we did have, and we still do have a four, a five-year plan that we are currently in the fourth year of, that doesn't mean that we actually just march forward blindly and do everything that we said that we were going to do five years ago. We are, we are honoring those investments because they're good investments. And there's times when we need to actually step back and say, is this the right time to make that investment based on our current context and the reality of what we're in, our budgets, you know, things like that. So this slide is meant to represent that as we work into a transition plan of one to two years beginning in FY '26, knowing that the Reimagining Education Committee is meeting now to plan for two to three years out about what's going to happen in our organization, the number of facilities, the grade configurations, the school boundaries, all of those have incredibly large impact on our facilities plan, obviously. And we want to make sure that we are driving that plan with a vision, a long-term vision about how we're going to invest in our capital improvements. So what you'll see in the transition years upcoming of FY '26 and FY '27 are continued investments in safety and security, what we list as dignity and access. What that is representative of is the legislation that has been passed in the last couple of years around restroom use. While we have, we're way ahead of the game in terms of making sure that students have dignity and access for the restrooms, we've still got some work to do there to get you to add some accessibility for our students and our staff. So that's what that's meant to represent. Equity and service and delivery is meant to talk about the needs of buildings, where we know that we're going to invest in buildings that have some maybe, that need roof repairs, that need some, some foundational finishes before we're going to invest in a building that might, is looking for just beautification, right? If you will. What are the foundation needs of our kids and their learning environments? Before we start talking about adding a wing that, that looks beautiful, if you will. So Dave, I don't know if I'm capturing that super well, but you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, yeah, specifically on the, the issue of the equity and service delivery. Yeah, Matt's spot on there. I think one of the other things I want to note on there is, we're also looking at, you know, if we sort of look at the landscape of all of our facilities, especially among some of the various grade levels, take elementary schools, there are certain improvements, quite honestly, that have not been made across the board at all facilities. An example I'll give and one that's, that's kind of a hot button issue sometimes, are, are projectors in gymnasiums. It's, it's something that not every elementary school has a built-in projection and audio system. The way that a lot of instruction is being done now, it would be helpful to have that. So some buildings have them that are built in and they're able to use them in, in a, you know, I'll say maybe a slightly elevated fashion than some of those facilities where every day they're rolling a projector in on a cart and somebody's bringing in the boombox and things like that. So we're looking at trying to also address some of those equitable type issues with the understanding that we also want to make investments, knowing that we, we don't know what the future is going to bring. We also want to be mindful and be making sure that we're doing investments that are, you know, we have the ability to repurpose something. We don't know exactly what things are going to look like. So in some cases, we want to make sure that we're being wise in making investments that, you know, if we, if we need to reconfigure a space and move something from point A to point B, we have the ability to do that and it's not going to, not going to cause any issues. Other than that though, I think you, you pretty much hit it on the head, man.
Other aspects of this particular slide I just want to lift up. As we move from the, the one to two-year transition plan and we sort of begin to implement in that, and we put some dates around FY '28 as a sort of a starting point in terms of when the reimagining education work will begin to take hold. You'll see some priority investments and I want to lift up those four components of multicultural learning experiences, world-class CTE, rigorous academic suites and wraparound holistic programming. As you might recall, those are the four sort of anchor components of the Reimagining Education Committee's work to make sure that we are grounded in those four aspects and that our decision-making is actually predicated in those areas, that we are enhancing and expanding those four, those four components district-wide. That is the priority focus of the Reimagining Education Committee. And again, it'll be, it's aligned and informs our strategic planning. So this is again meant to represent that the current five-year plan is in play. There are tweaks and modifications that need to be made to that plan because what we're experiencing now in our current reality is not what it was five years ago. We've got some transition plan that we need to do because our five-year plan that we're currently in will sunset next year. It's set to sunset. So we've got some transition plans that we're working on with a priority focus in safety, dignity and access, equity and service delivery, knowing that we're going to transition into a multi-year facility plan from the Reimagining Education Committee work. How about I stop there? Because I thought the big slide had a lot of stuff.
I just have two questions. If, for information purposes, we wanted to actually see the five-year plan and what actually has, capital investments have been spent on? Because I think there's some great stories to tell. Where would we find that? Is it updated online?
That, that information is out on the website. Yep, it is under the operations website. We are making a couple of updates to a few things on that, but that is available out there.
Great. And then when I look at this, I was under the impression that the reimagining education was also part of us taking on some of the budget challenges that are in front of us. When I look at this, I just want to understand that this doesn't mean we're going to spend FY '26 and '27 planning. It means that, so just help me understand how to look at the transition period versus the FY '28.
Sure. This is sort of a conservative runway, if you will, in terms of the implementation of some of the work of that committee. The full savings, if you will, if that's what you're asking, if there's savings in terms of reducing our physical plant footprint, some of the savings won't be had until we start getting it to FY '28, '29. That doesn't mean that we can't make decisions regarding the number of facilities and their location and the, some of those major reconfigurations sooner than that. It's when will the savings from some of those decisions actually be had? It's in the following fiscal year, not in the year that we actually make it. Because it is important to note that, because we're talking about an FY '25 budget tonight, this is not impacting FY '25 budget, Reimagining Education Committee work.
I'm one of six currently. I hope in FY '26, we have really hard conversations.
Just a quick comment and then a question. On the current plan, just a comment as a neighbor of a Des Moines public school, seeing, not understanding at all when it was coming up out of the ground, what was being put in place for a facility reimagination of my neighborhood school. And now seeing what it has done to just completely change the culture of the school and the outcomes at the school from a, a, a mental health standpoint of the students, according to the principal. And just observing myself, I'm really impressed and should leave it to the experts to understand what they're doing because you put a great facility up in, in our neighborhood. So thank you for that. But the, the question I wanted to ask was, what flexibility is embedded into these plans? So that if a community investment is put in place, somebody comes along and says, I'd like to donate $10 million to East High School, and we can move forward plans that are three or four years out, that we are not rejecting money on the table because we got a plan? Is there flexibility in place to do that?
100%.
And a procedure in place to do that?
There is, yeah. And this is really a Dave and Shashank's question. But yes, we will, we are not rejecting money for plans.
Right. And I think that that's one of those things, and Shashank, please jump in here. That is also one of those things that, that will come about as we continue to move through the reimagining education planning process. You know, we, we are in, and Matt said this numerous times, we're in, in some somewhat uncharted territory for us as an organization. And, and we are looking at things a little bit differently. You know, we've had several conversations at this table over the last several years about how we go about engaging community partners in, in a variety of different ways. And fiscally is one of those things that has come up multiple times. We're going to have to take that into account and we will take that into account as we go through this. But no, to your point, there, yeah, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to look the other way, certainly when, when we have members of the public or groups in the public that want to be active participants.
I have something quick. So going over.
So going over the investments this year, the secured entryway, I want to thank you guys. I went to Hyatt a couple of weeks ago and I saw that that was switched over from the university side back to the original side. How many schools left do we have that need to adjust their entryways for more secure?
Sure. So, so every facility has what we would refer to as a secure entryway. None of the district's buildings are set up in such a fashion that somebody can just walk up off the street and they should not be able to just walk in. They would need to, you know, request access through a video camera or directly through, you know, a window or something like that through somebody in the office. So all of the buildings in the district are set up with that type of secure entry. Like what you were referring to at, at Hyatt, we do have, right now, we will have, I believe it's three buildings after this summer that will receive or we will be looking at for some type of reconfiguration. Essentially, what we're trying to do is we're, we're looking at all of our secure entries and just trying to figure out, how do we make this so that it's the shortest path possible from the time that someone comes into a building to the time that they actually have engagement with a staff member? While we control the access, we want to make sure that, that their route into the building is coming in, going through the office, they're engaging with staff before they're then able to get in and, and go elsewhere. So we are actually taking on, we just revised the main entryway at Lincoln to accommodate this. We're looking at projects at Perkins Elementary School, Mitchell Pre-K Facility, Goodroll, and we'll be making some modifications to those facilities yet this year. And then we have several other facilities that are on the books that we would like to try and get those addressed as soon as possible, hopefully by next year. So all of the facilities have secure entryways. Revisions to those are sort of the strengthening, if you will. We're hoping to have all of those done within the next, within the next 12 months or so. And I want to say that's probably three to four that we'll have to do after this summer.
Which sort of leads us to, not actually disconnecting to the conversation that you've already had tonight in terms of, you know, taxes and how those dollars are spent. But I lift this particular slide up because while there is absolutely a problem that we need to solve financially that's caused specifically by loss of enrollment and low supplemental state aid over the last many, many, many years, that culminates into a financial crisis, if you will, the reimagining education committee acknowledges the problem, but chooses to spend time on the opportunity, right? And it is to make sure that we are maximizing, optimizing the dollars spent on physical plant structures to save money and then thereby repurpose those dollars for student programming, staff compensation, and all of those aspects that I think we all believe in. And so we've got to continue to become more efficient in the utilization of our spaces and acknowledge the fact that we've lost more than 3,000 students in the last several years and that we just cannot continue to operate with the number of facilities that we have. And so the facility consolidations and the tough conversations that you're referencing, Madam Chair, is just that. We're going to, we're going to need to redo some boundaries. We're going to need to consolidate some facilities, and that's what this reimagining education committee is about. Recognizing that we need to do that and how will we actually serve students and families and staff more efficiently, more effectively, with a higher quality of service in doing so. There's a lot of information that we still have yet to bring to the table for that committee to review, and a lot of it is underway. And the reason why that is, is because there's a, there's a lot of data around MNO and what that looks like and the cost of operating our, our facilities. We've got more than 70 of them that we operate on a daily basis, and it's important that we recognize the cost of all of those facilities. And so this is just a sort of setup slide, if you will, to get to the actual numbers. On average, an elementary school costs about $300,000 per year to operate. Middle schools cost about $540,000 a year, and our comprehensive high schools about $1.3 million a year. You'll see a little note down at the bottom that this is the average over the last 10 years, and this does include all of the staffing and operations that go into serving those buildings. It does include teaching staff and principal staff. It is operational staff that goes in, our, our custodial staff, our transportation that serve those students and those families in that community, and food nutrition and so forth and so on. So, please.
That actually does not include food and nutrition. We separated.
That's edited, right.
Right. We separated food and nutrition because they function as an enterprise fund. So we wanted to make sure that we have those numbers, but since they have their own revenue stream, we, we didn't necessarily include those in here.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Dave. But I thought that slide was important, as did the team, just to give us a range and understanding of what does it cost to actually operate our buildings on average on a yearly Part of that work and, and just in knowing that it's going to cost, for, for example, for an elementary school, $300,000 a year to operate, it's important that we get all the data in from BBS, which is our partners, architect partners, that are doing the work of our facility conditions assessment. They are in every last one of our facilities, letting us know the data on what is the, the structural and, you know, electrical, mechanical status of all of our buildings, and what do we needed to do to continue to actually move those buildings to the highest standard of efficiency and functionality as possible. What we're hearing already up to date, and we've got most of our buildings actually finalized already, we've still got a little bit more to go, what we're hearing already is that for a district that has buildings on the average age of close to 70 to 80 years old, they are in phenomenal shape. And so the team has done an exceptional job of maintaining those buildings and making sure that they not only look incredible, that they are functioning, functioning optimally and functionally, functioning optimally at the elementary level is still $300,000 a year. For middle school, it's still almost $550,000 a year. And so it is important for us to continue to keep that in mind as we have 70-plus facilities that we need to consider and how we're going to actually reorganize them and make sure that we prioritize the student learning experience in our decision-making. Oh, I think that was the last one. Before I turn it over, other questions for, for Dave and I or Dr. Roberts?
I'm just going to reiterate how important I think it is that we are positioned to make some really significant decisions in next year's budget cycle. I would hate to keep kicking the can.
Noted.
And would be helpful to understand what barriers there may be, but we've been talking about this as being prepared to understand and actualize those challenges by FY26. And I know it's complex and it's exciting, and I just want to compliment you because this is an opportunity. It's not, it's a challenge, but it's an opportunity.
Absolutely. And if I might, I think the, where we are right now, we've got data that still needs to come in from our facility conditions assessments to fully understand where we actually need to make some decisions in terms of consolidations. Those decisions are super data-driven, based on building conditions and things like that, and just growth in our, our city, growth in our neighborhoods, where we're seeing that we need to actually make sure that we need to double down on a building and where we actually need to have opportunities to actually consolidate schools. So those, those decisions actually can come quicker. It's the reimagining how we're going to serve students, right? And so as I speak to, not to prolong this conversation, but as I speak to a lot of committees and a lot of groups, we talk about, there's two options here. There's the option of just reducing the number of facilities that we have and continue to do what we're doing, or we can reduce the number of facilities that we have and do something differently for our children, for our staff, and for our families to improve our, our ability to meet student outcomes. So we've got those two options. Both of them include reducing the number of facilities that we actually operate. So how can we move about in actually reimagining education and how we serve our children, how we serve one another, and put a better product in front of our students?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, let me just add, sort of to punctuate this part of the presentation. You know, early this week amongst ourselves, we posed the question, and the question was simply this, in our 100 and almost 16-year history as a school system, have we ever embarked upon an endeavor of this magnitude? And even individuals who have been with the district since, I believe it was 1972, our longest-serving teammate said that she can think of a time when we've done this. And so with that said, I, I wanted to be very clear, Madam Chair, we hear your charge and we are certainly aligned with you. But to echo what Matt shared, doing this reimagining education undertaken, we are committed to being what I want to characterize as data-driven purists. We are not going to make any decisions or come to the board with any recommendations if they are not anchored in strong quantitative and qualitative data. And with that said, we know that there will be opportunities if we continue to follow the trend of declining enrollment where we may need to consider some consolidations. But what we have been sharing and preaching and sermonizing to our community members, especially those who are serving our communities, is that we, we're not going to make any decisions right now, right, based on something that we are observing with a naked eye. So declining enrollment, it's obvious, the trend in the last five years tells us that we're losing hundreds and even thousands of students. So we hear your charge, but we want to make sure that we are really sticking to the plan of accessing values and input from community members, following the guidance of our demographers, as well as being really thoughtful about the what, where, and how. But we hear you loud and clear, and we will make sure you align, we align to that.
Yeah, and just so I'm clear, isn't the timeline that we were working towards having the recommendation for FY26 budget?
We have a timeline of actually having a recommendation to you by the end of next fiscal year, which would be, yes.
Okay. And do you feel like we're on track for that?
I do.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any other questions? Ms. Martorano, do you have any questions?
Thanks for checking in. I'm on at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So cost of doing business. So here I wanted to share a few slides as to where are the general fund dollars distributed. So this slide highlights on the left-hand side the donut chart in terms of dollars and right, the percentages. So if we see the instruction and instruction support is almost 71%, 72% of the overall cost of the general fund dollars. The other item I would highlight is what is appearing as other uses, and this is largely the flow-through which happens for AEA. The rest of the item, which is 23%, is what is the general admin, school admin, and business and support services, and the plant operations and maintenance. Now, the next slide, which I've shifted to, is what is the DE definition for each of those items. So I'm not going to go through each and every item, but if we go through the next slide, this will highlight that 23% from the previous slide, which was not instruction and not AEA, the total cost of doing business is $118 million, and this is how it is distributed. So $6.9 million, or approximately 6% of 23%, not of the overall general fund budget, is towards those items, and that is what we have distributed. So general admin, school admin, business, and plant operations. And we have tried to list over here the support functions that we commonly relate to, to help us better understand then what the DE definition is. So again, we have the percentages on the right, and the donut chart shows us what the dollars are.
Can I ask a question on the expenditures by function? What is instructional support?
Instructional support is anyone which is not directly part of the classroom teaching, so counselors, interventionists, all those people are part of that, instruction support.
And so where would they fit in the definition of cost of doing business?
So this is, I have moved back, if you look at the screen, I have moved back over here, this is where the instruction and the instruction support is there. So this is part of overall general fund, but the other pie chart that I was talking about only has general and executive admin, school admin, business and central support services, and plant operations and maintenance. So this particular donut does not have instruction or instruction support at all.
Thank you.
So this is what we are trying to show by object, meaning what are the accounting, these things. So if we see over here, the big two items happen to be salaries and benefits, which is, should not be a surprise to anyone. And then we have purchase services and supplies, and what we have tried to show is the inner donut hole is what we are expecting to end FY24 with, and the outer is FY25. And having said that, FY25 is not 100% baked in stone. It's still moving, but it's not going to change significantly. So that gives us an idea of what is happening here. And this is my last slide. The other one was, which we discussed on April 2nd meeting. The legislative impact, I believe, the, the SSA as well as AEA as well as the teacher pay, hopefully the bill should get passed tomorrow. If the bill gets passed, I'll bring this to the board in the April 2nd meeting. If it does not get passed, or there's still moving parts, I think we'll cover it in the April 16th versus having two separate sessions.
Questions for Dr. Roberts? Is SSA, is the anticipated number?
Two and a half percent, unfortunately.
And is the AEA number going to come in less for, I know we're in a unique situation, are we seeing any reductions in AEA funds?
My understanding is, and the devil is going to be in the details, Jackie, is the way they're going to distribute the pie is that 90% is being managed at least in year one by AEA, and 10%, we have the flexibility, and that is more for education and media services, but for special education, there should not be change. So the dollar impact, I think, would be minimal. Now, it's a different decision that we decide that 10% for media and education, we don't want to do anything and we keep the money. That is different. But if we continue to provide the services that we have provided in the past, then there is no dollar impact as such.
And was there a final determination on salary? And how does that first-year teacher's salary in that range, and how does that impact our budget?
So, again.
At a high, just at a high level, because I think I'm trying to figure out, we started at 14, now it sounds like we're at a $7 million deficit, give or take?
That is correct, yeah.
And so we've still got $7 million to cut?
So the challenge is, what I'm hearing right now, 47.5 in year one, 60 by year 12, then 15 next year, and 62 in year two. As far as getting to 47.5 goes, they're going to use the data which has been submitted by the district in the beds report of last year. And we will get the money through TSS. That will be made, that the district would be made whole. The clarity which is not there, at least to me, is what's going to happen from year one to year 11? Will that be paid to us by the state or we'll have to fill? And to your point, if we have to supplement over there, then it's going to be a further deficit to the budget. But having said that, if we look at what is going to be paid to a year-two teacher, if we don't make any adjustments, it will be more than 47,500, but that gap between year one and year two would reduce significantly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Shashank, for your hard work. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, board members, do we need a break or can we keep going?
Go.
All right, we are moving to goals and guardrails.
Yes.
And AJ, I believe you're here, and Josie. And so board colleagues, if you have any additional budget questions, things that you want to make sure we talk about on April 2nd, if you could just email me any questions that you have, so I can add them to the existing list, that would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, didn't you give it to me already?
I think we did.
Okay, let me look.
Do you talk first or do I talk first?
Oh, yep, you did.
I'm just here for the free one.
AJ and Josie, you good?
Yeah.
You want to kick us off?
All right. You should have in front of you a document titled Recap. Do each of you have a copy of this? Excellent.
Yes.
So to navigate, you'll want to scroll all the way to the bottom. This is a rolling record of what was the consensus that the board arrived at, at the end of each meeting. And so it just gives you a rolling record of how we got to where we are. And so it just gives you a rolling record of how we got to where we are right now. All the way at the bottom, it says, this is what remains of the board's consensus at the end of the 3/5/24 session. And what it shows is that there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, oh, I'm sorry. 1, 2, 3 potential, potential goals, percent of DMPS seniors, one about literacy, the percent of students who are literate, and then the percent of 4th grade students scoring proficient or advanced. And then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 potential guardrails, one about environment for families, environment for students and staff, one about the composition of teaching and learning staff, one about inequitable treatment, and one about socio-emotional learning needs. So that brings us up to where we are right now. The task for this evening is to go through the goals and through the guardrails with a keep, delete, modify game plan. So what we'll do is we'll start with the very first goal, and I'll ask, you want to keep it, do you want to delete it, you want to modify? We'll go around the dais, but we'll get a quick poll, and then I'll do that for the remaining goals, or do that for the guardrails as well. That will, all that will tell us is which things do we need to spend the most time on, which things do we need to spend the least amount of time on, and then we will proceed accordingly. After we've gone through the existing consensus, then if there is anything that folks want to add that hasn't already come up during the modification phase, there'll be a time for that, but that'll be all the way at the end. Any questions before we dive in?
Would it be helpful to review the other document that has the targets in it as well, before we dive into that, or do you want to wait and do that after?
No, no, let's definitely start here, because there may be some of those that we don't even have to get to.
Got it.
So looking at the very first rough draft goal, the percent of DMPS seniors by the end of the fourth year of high school, who have four or more of the DMPS future-ready indicators as measured by the DMPS framework of enroll employee and list, will increase from X percent in June 2024 to X percent by June 2027. And so the only question, we're not doing discussion yet, the only question is, you want to keep it, delete it, or modify it? And we'll just go around the dais, we'll poll right quick, and then we'll move on to the next goal, and the next goal, and the next guardrail, and so on and so forth. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep would be my.
Keep.
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 Ms. Martorano?
Keep.
All right, the next goal, literacy. The percentage of insert demographics, insert grade, who are literate on grade level as measured by insert state assessment or growth metric based on state assessment data, will increase from W percent on X date to Y percent by Z date. This was intended to be a replacement for the existing goal about, around blackmail literacy. Keep, delete, or modify?
This is keeping it at a, at a subgroup.
But this is keeping it as--
Green.
So this, this is keeping it as it is currently drafted, recognizing that if you do keep this, there are some things that would have to be inserted because it's still incomplete.
AJ, I do want to point out, so there's no confusion, there is a third goal that will be proposed by Dr. Roberts that's not reflected in here?
Yes, and we'll get to the--
I know, but I think that's where he's going, which is why I just--
I just want to make sure that we're talking about, we had talked about the all literacy goal versus the subgroup literacy goal.
Yeah, so there's another one below that--
Yep.
--that is looking at all 4th graders. So this is the one above that, that today, in the current set of goals and guardrails that you have, is looking specifically at blackmail literacy. This one, you all need to decide, you want to keep, delete, or modify?
I think, I don't know if we're all looking at--
I don't think we're all looking at the same thing.
So is there a document called Recap, DMPS Golden Guardrail Brainstorming--
You're looking at rough draft goals, the first bullet point?
So the--
You mean the first page? I was looking at the last.
No, you got, you should be at the very last page.
Okay.
It, it reads, this is what remains of the board's consensus at the end of the 3/5/24 session.
Okay.
No, the green one.
So you should, you should be on the last, last page, under the heading, this is what remains of the board's consensus at the end of the 3/5/24 session.
I don't have anything past 2/27 in the document that was in the agenda.
Yeah.
I have, so it says this, just so, are we looking, so it's a two-page?
This is your document right here, right? That was seen on the screen?
Yeah, it should be.
No.
That's the one we are working on.
Then you have the incorrect document. We need to distribute the accurate one.
Do you have the link?
I do. Yeah, I do.
Yes, which on the screen now is the correct one.
That's what we have.
That is it.
So AJ, I'm looking at this, and I see two goals in green. We're doing keep, modify, delete on those two goals in green.
No, so there are, there are three that are not crossed out. And so you want to pay attention to the ones that have not been crossed out. There are three that are not crossed out.
Okay.
When you get down to guardrails, there are five that are not crossed out.
So literacy is a goal, in black.
That is correct. The board has not crossed that out yet.
Yep. Okay, I'm with you.
Part of clarification, so thank you all for having unanimous consensus around the college and career goal, which is the one that you just essentially--
Yes.
--said yes to. The second goal that AJ is now guiding us towards is what has been established as goal one. And that is, and I, I think for the benefit of clarity, I am looking at a couple of different documents here. This goal that we're talking about now is the percentage of 4th grade students scoring proficiency, proficient or advanced, on ISAS PLE assessments will increase from. Am I correct?
So, no. What I want to do first is go through the three goals and the five guardrails that currently have board consensus.
But that's what he was reading.
And decide whether to, well, you jumped past, we're on the second one. We're not, I want to go through them in sequence so that we don't miss anything. And then, once we've gone through, so for example, for the second one, the one that we're on right now, the one that is black, literacy, the percentage of insert demographics, insert grades, you could decide that you want to keep it, in which case, obviously, some additional work will have to be done. You could decide that you can, want to delete it, in which case, it will just get crossed out. All of the other things that have been crossed out in this document have reached the consensus of the board, that it would be deleted, that's why they're crossed out. Or you could decide that you want to modify it, in which case, it would stay there, then you'd have to decide what you want to fill in. And then that will be the exact same conversation we have for each and every one of the potential goals, the potential guardrails. That will reveal which ones already have a consensus to proceed with. For example, number one, that we've already have unanimous consensus around keeping, and which ones need some more time, and that way we'll know how to allocate our time this evening. So what that brings us back to is number two, the one that says literacy, the percentage of insert demographics, insert grades, who are literate on grade level. So that we'll go back to the original question, you want to keep it, delete it, or modify it, and only if it's not deleted, will we actually come back and discuss it. But now is not the time for discussion, we're just trying to figure out, what do we have left to work with? So, keep, delete, or modify?
I'm going to say modify, based on the way it's written.
Gotcha.
I have to understand that I, I'm at the right place, and I'm looking at the right thing? Because I'm looking at this, at this--
You're looking at this.
Second page.
Last page. Or, yeah. There, literacy, there you go. There you go.
AJ, if you don't mind for simplicity, can I just, I'm just going to say it in maybe a little clearer. We had one goal on future-ready Iowa, we have two goals on literacy. One goal on literacy is all students, one goal on literacy is potentially a subgroup. Is that a fair summary? Just so we're all, and so right now, the question is, keep, modify, or delete on the subgroup?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a moment?
I do.
All right, we'll come back. Keep, delete, modify?
Keep.
Modify.
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 Martorano?
Modify.
All right, that takes, yes. Have you had a moment?
Getting there.
And my answer is modify, I guess, because we have to decide on the demographic, I'm assuming.
Modify.
All right, that takes us to the third one, the percentage of 4th grade students scoring proficient or advanced. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. Keep.
Keep.
Miss Martorano?
Modify.
All right, that takes us to the very first draft guardrail. Superintendent should not allow an environment that allows families and viable community partners to be excluded, uninvited, unwelcome in the district's activities and endeavors. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. Keep.
Keep.
Keep.
Modify.
The superintendent shall not allow an environment for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
Modify.
Keep.
Keep.
Modify.
All right. The superintendent shall not allow the composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge from the diverse demographics of the student population while utilizing equitable and inclusive hiring practices conducted in accordance with cultural responsiveness. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
I have a question about it, and I don't know if there's a right time to ask that, or if I need to say modify?
If you have a process question, this is the right time for it. If you have something that's substantive to the content, that only depends if it remains.
It's just about the warning.
That would be subject to the content of it, so if it remains, you'll have a chance to discuss it, but if it gets deleted, then we won't be coming back.
Modify.
Let's go to Jenna.
Keep.
Keep.
Martorano?
Keep.
Modify.
Inequitable treatment, the superintendent should not allow inequitable treatment of students, or the continuation of students that allow for it. Keep, delete, or modify?
I'm going to say modify.
Keep.
Modify. Keep.
Modify.
And finally, the superintendent should not allow the social, emotional learning needs of adults and all students to be unaddressed. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
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 This is a keep, my last one was a modify, I'm sorry.
Keep.
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 And I'm changing your last one to modify from a keep.
Got it. Okay, so in between the last conversation and this one, I did email you two pieces of guidance. I want to offer those both now. One of those was that when you're thinking about both goals and guardrails, but particularly with guardrails, you're always trying to identify, what is the highest need, what's the highest priority? And so that might often vary based on the circumstances on the ground. One of the circumstances that I think I referenced is that if I have a superintendent that's not, I did not reference this, if I have a superintendent who's not bilingual, and I feel like we've struggled in that area, then we bring in a superintendent who is bilingual, and they just really glow in that area, I might be less likely to have a guardrail around that, because the conditions on the ground have changed. It's no longer the thing that's the most urgent for me to try to address in the guardrails. I can preserve those for something that is of greater urgency in the moment. And so that's one idea that I wanted to offer you, is that as you're thinking about how many guardrails do we want to have, I'm actively offering you guidance to consider decreasing the number. Remember, our coaching from day one has always been 1 to 3 goals, 1 to 3 guardrails. You are clearly outside of that on the guardrails. You are within the range that is reasonable, 1 to 5, but it is outside the range that is recommended, 1 to 3. The second piece of guidance I offered you was along the same intention, was to trying to think through, how do we, how do we crunch down the number of guardrails, so that we're really lifting up the most urgent priorities? One thing to consider is that you have multiple guardrails here that, from my reading, really try to speak to the nature of behavior, and, you know, how are we protecting the, the most vibrant and possibility-inducing learning environment? If that is the overall value you're trying to accomplish, which I can't tell you that it is, only you can determine that, but if that is what you're trying to accomplish, I would certainly encourage you to figure out how to accomplish that in one guardrail that is simple, rather than the multiple guardrails that are complex, or one super-comound guardrail. And so both of these ideas, you know, what's true on the ground, and is there a higher value that we can try to lean into, are both offered with the same intention. Is it possible to have fewer guardrails? That is not a requirement, but it certainly is always urging, because that will allow you to see more improvement in those places as you have a narrower and narrower focus. So that being, I share that, because we have several on here that we're going to dive into, that you have, the ones that you've chosen to keep, we're not even going to talk about. Whereas unanimous decision to keep it, we won't even discuss it.
Can you highlight which ones those were, that we decided to keep?
So there is unanimity around keeping the first rough draft goal around DMPS seniors, and around the very last rough draft guardrail, around socio-emotional learning needs. All of the others were of some mix. What I'll go to first is the ones that have the most unreadiness. So for example, there was only one modify offered for the 4th grade reading, definitely be coming to that toward the end if we have time. From my consideration, it is largely a lock. Same thing with the guardrail around environment that allows families and viable community partners not to be excluded. There was only one modify, everything else was keep, and so that is low on my priority list to bring you back to. The rest of them were all very mixed between keep and modify. And so we'll start with the goals, in this case, the one around more targeted literacy, and then we'll work from there. Is that, did that answer it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so what that brings us to first is a goal, the more targeted goal around literacy. There were, it was mostly an interest in modifying with one interest in keeping. So it sounds like there's a lot of work. If you have something to modify the language, or if you think that there's slightly better language, this is your opportunity to submit it. The floor is open. What specific language changes might you recommend for this more targeted literacy goal? Specific language changes? I'm actively discouraging you from spending a lot of time discussing, I would first want to get actual language changes on the floor, and then let's discuss those.
I would like to suggest that it would be the percentage of brown and black males and/or the lowest performing students that are statistically significant to be able to measure progress. And word choice, I'd appreciate any feedback on that.
So the specific language choice is to, is where it says a percentage of insert here, what you would insert there is percentage of black and brown males, or you'd insert as an alternative, whatever, I'm assuming the superintendent would come back with, as being the lowest performing students that are statistically significant to be able to measure progress.
I actually want to stay committed to brown and black.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, so that is a recommended language change. Are there any other recommended language changes? Anyone else?
I recommend Hispanic and black males as the population.
Yeah. And word choice, I'd appreciate any feedback on that.
So the specific language choice is where it says a percentage of insert here. What you would insert there is percentage of black and brown males, or you'd insert as an alternative whatever, I'm assuming the superintendent would come back with, as being the lowest performing students that are statistically significant to be able to measure progress.
I actually want to stay committed to brown and black.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, so that is a recommended language change. Are there any other recommended language changes? Anyone else?
I recommend Hispanic and black males as the population.
Yeah, I really defer to cultural competence of our superintendent and others to determine what the word choice that we want to use is with regards to the demographics.
Clarification, is this the fourth grade goal?
Yes. That is not clarified.
I think so.
Yep.
So let me offer, if I may, maybe I'll wait until A.J. finished guiding us through the language changes. If this is a fourth grade goal, if I may sort of bring for the board's recollection, what we talked about at length, this one is middle school?
Well, this is the, I think.
Keep going.
I thought your recommendation was, we're either going to have four goals, or your recommendation was that this potentially would be middle school.
No, I think he's right because the next one is fourth, right?
So the next one that, and that we will discuss, is fourth, all fourth graders. This one was explicitly intended to be a student group of fourth graders, of student group, of students. You never indicated which student group, and you never indicated which grade level.
Thank you, A.J. Now we're talking about a middle school goal. And so black and Hispanic is what I'm hearing as a language change. That works. That aligns to what we were thinking about as well.
So that's, so black and Hispanic males, black and Hispanic or black and Hispanic males?
Black and Hispanic students in eighth grade.
Okay.
Do we want to say Hispanic or Latinx?
Latinx. We have Latinx grade. Thank you, Maria.
Thanks.
That's the language we have.
All right, so far we have three different recommendations for language changes. Percentage of black and brown males, percentage of Hispanic and black males, percentage of black and Latinx eighth graders. Is there anyone else who wants to toss something in here before we start discussing this? Other potential modifications?
I don't think it's worth discussing, but I would still lift up all males in this as a subgroup.
Got it. So we have four. I would highlight for only one of them discusses a grade. It's a superintendent's mention of eighth graders. For any of the other three people who proposed language, did you have a grade that you wanted to include in your recommendation?
No, and you can take off my language. I defer. I defer.
I would defer to Dr. Roberts, but I think eighth grade is what we were talking about.
All right, so we're down to two. Percentage of Hispanic and black males, no indication of grade. Percentage of black and Latinx eighth graders. Is there anyone else who wants to add something for consideration before we dive into these? All right, hearing none, superintendent, will you share a little bit about why your recommendation?
Yeah, thank you so much. And certainly I'll also defer to my teammate, Josie, to also weigh in. I heard Board Member Dix is really push, and it's a healthy one with regards to having a focus on black and Latinx males. When we've looked at the data and the trends, what we've seen is there is not a significant enough difference between the achievement, particularly for the eighth grade students, in terms of males, or that is Jen's specific, right? Whether it's black or Latinx males, or black and Latinx all students. And we believe in this instance, because there's not a significant difference in terms of gaps or deficits, we believe that it would be prudent for us to look at an all group for black and Latinx as opposed to specifically males. Anything else, Josie?
I would add that throughout middle school, we see actually black and Latinx females kind of bounce up and down from males. So sometimes the female group is higher in that achievement category, sometimes the male group is higher throughout those middle school years, which is another reason for that larger whole population.
And I'm sorry, just for clarification, Dr. Roberts, I was saying all males. Not, like, I wasn't saying black and Latinx. I was going to lift, like, to put a bigger group in, so.
Thank you. Thank you. So what we're offering as a recommendation to the board, based on the discussion and our research and due diligence around unpacking the data, is for us to look at an eighth grade black and Latinx all students. What we've offered to the board was the very same goal, identical in language, with the exception of the content area. So we offered two options, literacy and math. Only one of those should be a goal for eighth grade, hence having a middle school goal. A.J., I think the question now for the board maybe is whether, which of the two content areas the board has an appetite to charge the superintendent and team with, literacy or math?
Board members, floor is open.
Literacy.
I'm all in on literacy. If you can't read, the math is going to be tough to do.
Literacy. Literacy.
I defer to the superintendent and team on what they think is best.
Ms. Marterano?
I apologize. Literacy.
All right, so what it sounds like is we have a emergent consensus that the percentage of Hispanic, the percentage of black and Latinx eighth graders who are literate on grade level is measured by, to be determined, will increase from this percent to that percent. Let's run through and check where the board is on this. I'll read it one more time. The percentage is simply inserting black and Latinx eighth graders. The percentage of black and Latinx eighth graders who are literate on grade level is measured by, to be determined, will increase from X to Y. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep for me.
Keep.
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 Marterano?
I'm sorry. Can you ask the question again?
Kim, we can't hear you.
I didn't hear that.
Can you ask the question again?
We're testing consensus on the percentage of black and Latinx eighth graders who are literate on grade level is measured by, to be determined, will increase from X to Y. Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
That takes us to the, that completes a consensus for that item and takes us to the third potential goal around fourth grade literacy. It did not have absolute, actually, I'm sorry. No, that is the last goal on here. And so I wanted to check in on this one. There was a desire for modification, and so now the floor is open. Is there a specific recommendation for a language change for the third goal around fourth grade literacy? Is there anyone with a specific recommendation for a language change?
Was that Ms. Marterano who said modify?
Yes, it was. My recommendation was going to be looking at black and Hispanic males.
Got it. Percentage of black and Hispanic males. Is there anyone else with specific language recommendation for this potential, for this potential goal? Any other recommended language change? All right, hearing none, you want to offer explanation for your proposed modification?
Well, it was before the recent changes, but I want to focus on the students that are highest need and that we are currently underserving.
Anyone else, discussion on this topic?
Clarifying question.
Yeah.
If we have a goal like this, is it possible that our interims reflect subpopulations?
When you have a goal that speaks to all students, the only time you would have interims that speak to student populations, if the correlation between that student population in the whole is among the highest correlations available to the administration. So for example, what will happen is you look at different student groups, some of them will be higher up in terms of correlation, usually your larger student groups. Some will be lower. But then there will also maybe other data entirely that's not demographically derived that might, that will have some correlation as well. The task for the superintendent is not to pick and choose among those which seems most appealing to the board, but rather to pick the ones that have the strongest predictive power. So if your desired student group has a correlation of 0.6, but there are three others that have a correlation of 0.75 and above, the superintendent will certainly not pick the one that you want in favor of picking the ones that have a higher correlation.
Great, thank you.
Other questions on this before we test again for consensus? All right, so on this one, I'm hearing one board member has offered a recommendation. So we want to test for that recommendation. So what we're asking is you want to keep, delete, or modify the proposed variant? The one that says the percentage of black and Hispanic male fourth grade students scoring proficient or advanced will increase from X to Y. So for that proposed variant, do you want to keep it, delete it, or modify it? Yes, sir?
I think I'm going to defer to Dr. Roberts on, I'm okay with either one of these two, but I defer to, results is what the overall lifting up of these outcomes would be. So whichever one you feel like is going to work the fastest.
Can you read it again, please?
The percentage of black and Hispanic male fourth grade students scoring proficient or advanced on ISASP ELA assessment will increase from 50% in June 2023 to 70% in June of 2027. The only difference is the insertion of the percentage of black and Hispanic males.
I'd like to see all students.
So keep, delete, or modify the proposed?
Modify.
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 You want to keep, delete, or modify the proposed, the language that you proposed?
If I say keep, does that mean that we are going in circles? If I'm the only one, I will.
Yeah, what it means is there's a lack of consensus and I'm moving on.
I will come to consensus with my board colleagues.
All right, then we proceed with goal number three as drafted, it's not, with a emergent consensus. All right, that takes us to our guardrails. Of the guardrails, we are not going to revisit the fifth one unless circumstances required. But for the moment, the plan is to skip it entirely since it has a strong consensus. So what I want to do is jump down to the second one, actually. The superintendent should not allow an environment for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome. Are there specific language changes for this one? The superintendent should not allow an environment for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe or unwelcome. Are there any specific language changes that someone would recommend?
I put modify, and I would like us to consider adding in the classroom. So the same guardrail, but specifically in the classroom.
Classroom, got it. Anyone else, specific language changes?
I would recommend the superintendent should not allow an environment that allows the community to be excluded.
Are you on, I think you're on the wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're on the one that reads, the superintendent should not allow an environment for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome.
And my modification to that one was the superintendent should not allow in an environment that is unsafe and unwelcome.
So strike.
For both students and staff, psychologically and physically.
Got it. Any other specific language recommendations? All right, the floor is open. There are two recommendations. One is to add in the classroom at the end of it. The other is to essentially remove the middle part of it that reads both students and staff that is psychologically and physically. The floor is open for a discussion about either of these recommended modifications.
I guess I'm really just trying to reflect what I felt like I heard a lot from the community, which is that the conditions for learning in the classroom are not sufficient for learning. And I felt like I heard that from our community members, from our students, from our staff. And my thought around in the classroom is to continue to drive home the point that this, that learning is not taking place in classrooms because of conditions for learning. It may be too specific, but I would like to get some feedback from my board colleagues.
I agree with that. Patrick and I were in a meeting this weekend, and that was brought up. And I also visited the school, talked to a couple of staff, and they pushed for that, that, I mean, it's in the classroom that's happening. So I agree with that change.
Yeah, I agree, in the classroom.
Any other reflections on the language around in the classroom?
No, but just for my board colleagues to remember, as I'm thinking through this, we, you know, I think sometimes you don't want to be too specific, but also being specific does give good direction to what the interims are that we expect and what we expect to be monitored. So just kind of lifting that up as I'm thinking about why words do matter in what we select.
That is completely entirely accurate. That is absolutely what you want to be reflecting on, is less specificity will create a more broad view of protection of the value. More specificity will provide more clarity around where, what your interpretation of the community's value is. And so it's for y'all to decide whether it'd be tighter loose, but your observation is completely spot on.
You sound like you've been reading A.J.'s book.
I've read it one and a half times, A.J.
My condolences.
So that was the reason for my recommended change as well, was to be more broad and have the superintendent provide us with interims that reflected the current state. And if, in fact, that interpretation was not in line with what the vision that we're trying to uphold, then we could properly adjust.
So, Kim, we kind of lost you, but I think maybe I'll just turn that into a question, which is if we make it more broad in terms of the psychologically and physically, and but keep in the classroom, and Dr. Roberts comes back with interims that maybe don't really touch on the psychologically and the physically, is that an opportunity for us to regroup and talk about how we might become more specific in our guardrail?
Yeah, this is a good moment to describe the larger process. So the intention is to walk away from this table with a clear consensus around, here are the goals, here are the guardrails. The staff's job then is to put together a set of interims. But the reason you are not voting on goals and guardrails, even though you reached consensus tonight, is because our coaching is never accept a set of goals and guardrails until you know how they will be measured, and that you have made the determination that those are a reasonable interpretation of what you meant. And if they're not a reasonable interpretation of what you meant, that doesn't mean staff did anything wrong, it just means you need to be more clear in your language. And so that would be the moment, after you've got the interims in front of you, to decide, do we need to be tighter in our language or not? Generally speaking, my coaching is, if I'm wavering between the two, is to start more broad, see what the interims say, and then go from there. But the choice tonight is yours. It sounds like there's an emergent consensus around making the context in the classroom. What say you, board, about condensing out both student and staff that is psychologically and physically?
I'm going to need to hear that again. I didn't hear, I didn't clearly hear what Kim said. I want to, I want to hear it read so that I can.
Yeah, let me read the revised version that includes the emergent consensus for in the classroom. The superintendent, here's what it would be if you accepted both revisions. The superintendent should not allow an environment in the classroom that is unsafe and unwelcoming. The superintendent should not allow an environment in the classroom that is unsafe and unwelcoming.
I would hold firm on physically, for sure, but I, if we're going to add physically, I think psychologically, too.
Floor is open. Who else? What's your?
My concern is that we're creating such a specific guardrail that we won't have measures to monitor this with. And so that's why I'm recommending that we keep it broad to see what those interims are as we, and then reevaluate. Because if we do have to create measures, we're talking a year before we can monitor, or quite some time.
Yeah, so the, the point that she's lifting up is well made. I would never encourage you all to set your goals and guardrails based on what I would never encourage you all to set your goals and guardrails based on what data is currently available. If the vision and values of the community diverge from the data that's available, the superintendent's job is to catch up with the community, not hold back the community based on what data is available. But the point that she's making is, if we shift away from data that's available, it's probably going to be a year or two, likely three years, depending on what you choose to measure, before you'd have reliable data, because they'd have to go put those data systems in, and that is not a flip a switch phenomenon. And so the more specific you get, the point she's making, is that if data doesn't exist for that, you make that recognizing that that is the correct decision, because you believe it's the values of the community, but the consequence is you are likely to, I would argue, for you to expect to be three years out from having meaningful data to measure that, if the data systems don't currently exist.
So if we use the broader term, Josie, do we have data that? I still want to make a false choice.
You mean if you have, you mean if you stick with the more specific version that has psychologically and physically safe, you're wondering, does the district feel like it has data right now?
What I'm saying is, it sounds like we're getting away from the specific language, like the, the recommendation is to get away from the specific language. Does that give us any better measures?
So safety is very similar to one of the guardrails that was already in place. So many of the interims that we are considering at this time are actually very similar to the ones that were previously in place, specifically around panorama self-assessment of safety, a new one that is based on the state's definition of assault, which is reported to the state on an annual basis, and then the Gallup Safe Staff Safety and Welcoming Index, which has been taken annually for the last several years.
But that new one, we would have to wait for anyway, right? My point is, if we use the old data, we're doing the same thing. If we look for more specific, yes, we will have to wait, but it is, I think, more focused on the language and the spirit of the feedback that we got. And so I'm, I wonder if we're not making a false choice here in saying that if we go broader, we'll be able to measure it sooner. That is true, but I think we're measuring it with the same way that we've done it before, and I think the community has asked us to think about this a little bit differently and more specifically. That'd be my feedback.
Board members, what's eight?
Yeah, I appreciate the suggestion about keeping it broad, but yet I tend to agree that I'd like to call out certain things that were heard. Students and staff, to me, recognizes that we heard it from both, and both populations are important.
I'm in consensus, yeah. I want the vocabulary be in, in there. That's what our community's been asking for, and the teachers, and that is what we need to bring.
Yeah, so what I appreciated about the conversation is, an important part of my job is to make sure that you all are operating from the same information. And now it sounds like you're operating from the same information, but I hear Marterano saying, and that gives me pause, and you're saying, I don't necessarily like that, but it doesn't give me pause. And this, this is what deliberation looks like. Other reflections before we test for consensus?
We go with what the community wants.
All right, that's, that, that is for y'all to decide what, what the community wants. Any other reflections? All right, now we'll test for consensus on the, on the condensed version. What I've heard, sounds like there's already consensus on the, in the classroom, so I'm not testing for that. So I'm going to read the modified version again, that has both in the classroom and the condensed version, and then testing, you want to keep, delete, or modify the recommended, the recommended language. So here's what it sounds like with all the recommended language. The superintendent shall not allow an environment in the classroom that is unsafe and unwelcome. So do you want to keep that, in which case you've added in both of the recommendations? Do you want to delete that, in which case we fall back to the existing consensus, which is the superintendent shall not allow an environment in the classroom for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome? So you want to keep it, or do you want to delete it? You could also modify it, but I don't know how much sense that makes at the moment, unless you have some changed language. Keep or delete or modify?
The last one you said. Keeps, keeps physical and psychological, and keeps in the classroom.
All right, so we're deleting that particular recommendation to remove those. Got it.
Sorry.
So delete, you, is you keep psychological and physically. Keep, you remove those. I realize it's backwards, sorry.
I'm confused.
Can you just read what we're keep, deleting, or modifying?
Do you want to, let, let me ask it differently. Do you want to keep psychological, students and staff that is psychologically and physically, or do you want to remove both students and staff that is psychologically and physically?
So go broader. So delete physically and?
Got it.
Psychologically. Keep.
Why are you looking at me that way? Am I getting it wrong?
Yeah, you said you want to keep psychological, psychologically and physically.
You're right.
And students and staff.
It was, it was.
OK, keep. See, I, no, I had it right the first time, so in my mind, I had it flipped, and you just flipped it again, that's why, OK. Hannah reads my mind, that's why she's looking at me funny. Keep, the?
Yeah.
Keep.
Ms. Marterano?
Yeah, I will go with the will of my board colleagues.
All right, so what that leaves us with is a consensus that's been reached around, the superintendent shall not allow an environment in the classroom for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome. Is there any lack of consensus around that before we move on? I thought I heard a consensus on that, but I'm just checking right now to make sure I heard correctly. All right.
Yeah, I, my only struggle is that we, we invested over a million dollars in safety that was not psychological or, or physical per se, and.
I will go with the will of the board, sorry.
Got it. All right, then we have a consensus on the, on that, which is the second. That takes us down to the third one. The superintendent shall not allow the composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge from the diverse demographics of the student population while utilizing equitable and inclusive hiring practices conducted in accordance with cultural responsiveness. That is a bit, I'll read it one more time, and then I'll be asking if there are specific language changes that are recommended. The superintendent shall not allow the composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge from the diverse demographics of the student population while utilizing equitable and inclusive hiring practices conducted in accordance with cultural responsiveness. What specific language changes do you have to recommend?
Can I ask a question?
Always.
When we say teaching and learning staff, who, who is that exactly?
Mr. Superintendent?
Who are we referring to?
Yes, rather broadly, extends beyond teachers. So teaching and learning staff could include teachers, certainly instructional coaches, and just a number of other student-facing positions.
Include the administrators.
Instructionally related, yes. That includes administrators as well, because we refer to them as instructional leaders, yeah.
So I, I'm going to share that I was struggling between modify or delete. And part of the reason I just want to share this is, when I think about why we hired Dr. Roberts, part of it was his cultural competency and his strong desire to make sure that we have a more diverse staff. And so I guess I just want to point out that I had a really good conversation with A.J., and it, it is important to realize that sometimes guardrails are set based on who your superintendent is. And so the only thing that I would offer is that either, one, do we have any reason to have this as a concern that needs to be monitored and addressed? And the only reason to consider not doing it is if that allows us to devote more time and energy to other things that are higher priority. And then the last thing I'll say is, if, if we want the superintendent to focus on something as it relates to our staff, is this what we want the focus to be on? So I said a little bit too much, but I just wanted to share.
That actually does sound like a delete.
I think I'm wanting to offer the same perspective that you gave me, which is, sometimes guardrails are put in place based on who the superintendent is. This guardrail has been in place for several years, and is this a guardrail that makes sense with our current superintendent? So I'm kind of saying, I'd, I'd be comfortable deleting it, but I really want to hear from other, I'm not.
Yeah, board, the conversation remains open.
I, I think I hear what you say, and I'm going to use A.J.'s getting to the airport analogy for everybody, because it's a common one. If the person behind the wheel doesn't look like they can see very well, you might add in, don't use these routes, and please get me there safely. Whereas, I think this is a question you wouldn't even ask if you get into the car and you think, yeah, this person looks like a totally competent driver, and this is not a concern to me. I think that's a valid point. And I think it allows us to focus on, not spend time on things that are patently obvious in, you know, in our operations.
And yet it's a, I think my struggle is, and yet it's a value, like we know our community feels so strongly about it. So that's my dilemma.
So A.J., help us out with this, because to what extent are we putting guardrails in place because we think it makes the community feel better that they're on paper versus doing things that focus us in on when we're doing the work at the board table, getting us focused down? Because that, that feels to me like, I, I agree with you. I think we should say out loud what our values are, and that's one of them. However, I'm also pulled by the idea of, this is going to take us time, and that's time we could be using others, to do other stuff.
Yeah, the cost benefit analysis that you have to do is that there are literally hundreds of values that this community has that are nowhere in your drafts. Your, I guarantee there is a strong contingent of your community who strongly value the arts in instruction. I see nothing whatsoever about the arts here. So what guardrails aren't doing is capturing every possible value that your community might have. What they are doing is really serving as, what are kind of the highest areas of risk, the highest areas of concern and priority? Because if we try to capture everything, you'd have 500 guardrails. That would render all of them worthless. And so this is why we recommend have one to three, definitely no more than five. So you can keep all five you have, but we do recommend that you have one to three. And part of the rationale that you're going through is, what are values of the community that we believe are significantly at risk? So if you find, I take from what you have on paper that you do not currently find arts programming to be at the highest state of risk as a district. If you did, it would be on here. How do I know? It frequently comes up in other districts. It's noticeably missing from yours, given the frequency with which it comes up other times that people are discussing it. But that's because other people are really, are really, really struggling with art education, whereas I take from this that that's, that just didn't rise to the top five for you. And so there are plenty of things that are values, but the goal here isn't, what is the maximum set of values that we can capture? It's actually the opposite. What's the minimum set of things, values that we feel are at risk and have to be part of our work going forward? As a reminder, the goals and guardrails are also your evaluation of the superintendent. So if this is an area that you want to be able to evaluate what the superintendent is, you need to keep it. If it's an area that you're less concerned about evaluating the superintendent, then you have a decision of whether or not it is something that can be extracted.
That was a really good point, and that actually alters how I think about it. I want to keep it.
I talk too much.
I think that we, like, like what you mentioned, I think that we've had something similar for a long time. We've had it for a long time, but nothing happened. And I think, I think it's important to listen to what our community said, and truly it's a value. And I am not doubting that Dr. Roberts is going to. I don't think that he is not going to value diversity or representation, but I think that it would be good for us to let the community know that we heard them, and that we have someone that is going to get the job done, and that we have something on paper that says, here's our proof to you that we are going to do it. And so I say, keep it.
I say, keep it.
Keep it.
Ms. Marterano?
Keep.
All right, so it sounds like we've rapidly reached consensus around keeping this. I have, hearing no additional modifying language, we'll proceed, unless someone has specific language modifications for this one. Hearing none, that takes us to inequitable treatment. The superintendent shall not allow inequitable treatment of students or the continuation of systems that allow for it. There's a lot of desire for modification. We'll hear those now. What specific language do you have that you want to recommend?
I guess my comment is, I'm not sure that this is the essence of where it started. I felt like it started where it was more about ensuring that there are pathways, especially for, not just Latinx, but also other students of color that have access to different pathways. I felt like I heard it differently when we were discussing it, but maybe it evolved, and I just don't remember this. Because I'm not sure what this.
Yeah.
It's very broad. And so I.
Yeah, maybe overly.
It's almost overly broad. But I, I think Maria, you, among others, really made the case for something, and I just want to make sure we feel like this is actually reflecting what some of the initial early intent was.
Maria, it was about access, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Wasn't that the essence of what we were talking about, is access to?
I think we were talking about graduation. Missing ELL students? No?
It was about, if I remember, it was about capacity, it was about understanding so that all kids and families understood the multiple pathways that they could take.
Avenues.
Avenues, right? So Central Campus, Central Academy, college prep, FAFSA, I mean, you name it. It was just, it was around equitable access. And so I don't know if it's just the word, it's not, is it, I mean, maybe it's treatment, but is it access? So I'm deferring to what other people think, but I, maybe the word access helps us change that? Do other people recall this conversation or have strong feelings?
I agree with that sentiment of the conversation, and I would, I would also go with access, because I remember, as I remember it, it was about, especially as ELL students sort of graduated out of and went into our more general population of students, then it was a, but I don't really know how to navigate this system, and that was inequitable. And so that was the, that's the conversation I remember.
It was more about investing in trying to help our ELL students graduate, so test out of ELL, so they have more opportunities to have greater access to all the options that any other student has once they graduate from high school.
Our Roosevelt conversation is coming up. That's the one that triggers this in my head.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to ask from a data perspective, I know we heard this in our community listening sessions around some of the more rigorous, that it's hard to test out. For some reason, there are some native speakers that kind of were still stuck in ELL. Is that? And I'm, I'm kind of also looking at Dr. Roberts to understand if the data backs up what we think, which is, we have, I don't know, we're holding more kids in ELL.
Or we have such low, maybe rates of students that are able to test out of ELL? Or what are the, what are, what's the data?
I, I don't have hard numbers in front of me, but kind of anecdotally, what we see is our exit rates drop over time. So as students get into their secondary experience into high school, they're less likely to exit ALPA-21 if they have not already exited by that point. Does that, does that kind of align with the question?
Yeah.
But, but by that time, they But by that time, they have missed some of the off-ramps into some of these other programs. Like, you know, in seventh or eighth grade, some kids are getting access to Central Campus. And is that the, the access point?
I wonder, for an example of my kids that were in E.L.L. as English is their first language. It was hard for them, I would say, sixth grade, seventh grade to test out of E.L.L. I wonder if that's where it's coming from of that part of just them getting that step to exit out when they feel comfortable. And maybe this is a, like, a different conversation, but you know, how do we determine what child is supposed to be in L.L.? Is it just based on the fact that maybe they come from a biracial? Or does it have to do with, you know, ethnicity, language? Or, because a lot of our students are not, I mean, there's, their first language is not.
So hold on, I want to pause for a quick second. So I've kind of left the conversation to,
It's a different conversation.
Go a little while and see if y'all could sort this out. But I'm not hearing it's getting any closer to what is the actual language change that you would make? So based on what you've been discussing, is, and it doesn't have to be perfect. Is there, is there some type of language somebody's trying to suggest? Because if there's no suggestive language change, I'll accept that as a consensus and we'll move on.
We said we were going to add access, right?
Shall not allow the inequitable access to education programming, advanced education programming.
I guess I just want to make sure that we have an identified problem that has data behind it that we're trying to solve. So I hate to take us two steps backwards, but that's really important to make sure we have that. And so I don't know how we go backwards to, whether it's to ask Dr. Roberts or Josie for some data that identifies if indeed there is a
Access problem.
Access problem.
Staff, you have thoughts on this?
We can certainly provide something. It, I think, I need more specificity about access to what? Access to core classes, access to Central Academy, Central Campus, access to
It's the whole gamut, right? So it is, I think it's come up specifically as it relates to access to Central Academy. But then also Central Campus, the concept of G.T., right? So I think it's, it's making sure that our marginalized students are not left out.
So if I may, if you please, the board, I think what we're trying to get to is inequitable, inequitable access in general. What we will need to do then to charge to the team and I will be for us to look at, what are the interim guardrails that gets to a level of specificity, right? And that will include inequitable access to career ready programs, inequitable access to exiting out of their newcomer classes, right? That's where we get into specificity. But inequitable access seems like a guardrail and a value that should be embraced in, in equitable access in general.
That's helpful.
In terms of context, I remember the conversation in conference room B. Then Patrick, Maria and I were in the same subgroup. And that's what we were trying to get to. How can we make sure we are increasing additional opportunities for Latinx students, particularly those who are E.L.L.?
So are we specifically calling out a student population because this currently says students?
Somebody want to offer a specific language change? We still have nothing on the table for a specific language change.
Well, we do. We have the superintendent shall not allow inequitable access to blank.
No, I, I'm with her.
Like, blank is demographic or the continuation of systems that allow for it. So I think we have the language, we have to decide.
Access to what?
All, well, no, inequitable access. Do we need to say to what? I mean, you just, can't we just say inequitable access to pro, to
Students.
You're saying put all students?
It could be an all student group, but then we'll get to a level of specificity, right? When we look at, or, but what I'm hearing called out is Latinx students. Or E.L.L. students. E.L.L. students.
E.L.L. students.
So, right, it goes beyond Latinx because then we look at a student demographics. Or English language learners are much more than English language, than Hispanic or Latinx students, so.
So the superintendent shall not allow inequitable access for E.L.L. students or the continuation of systems that allow for it. Generally that.
Yes.
Is everybody?
Yeah.
Ms. Marterano?
I'm okay with that.
Thumbs up. Okay.
All right. So it sounds like we've rapidly arrived at consensus around the superintendent shall not allow inequitable access for E.L.L. students or the continuation of systems that allow for it. Did I capture that correctly? All right. It sounds like we have consensus for this, obviously pending. We'll see what the, what the data says when we're looking at interims. All right, so that brings us all the way back to the first, or rather, we skipped over. The superintendent shall not allow an environment that allows families and viable community partners to be excluded, uninvited and unwelcome into the district's activities and endeavors. There was some, there's only one interest in a modification. So there's a lot of consensus already here. Does someone have specific language for a modification?
My modification would be the superintendent shall not allow an environment that allows community to be excluded, uninvited and unwelcome to the district's activities and endeavors.
All right, so it's, so swapping out families and viable community partners with community.
Correct.
Got it. Floor is open.
Kim, my only thought is that I like the viable community partners because then it allows the district to decide who is a viable community partner rather than having arguments with a lot of groups that might be counterproductive to the work that we're doing to, to try to get to student outcomes. That's my only thought.
This is a, so the interesting point here is either the board explicitly says this only applies to viable community partners. And then the superintendent gets to define what is a viable community partner.
Yep.
Or the board leaves it open to, to community. And then the super, but then again, the superintendent is determining who fits into that community. So it sounds like those are your two major options. Board members, what's
I, I also think there's value in, in having families listed as well. I think that, that's something that we hear a lot about is, is making sure it's a welcoming space for all, for families. So I do find value in calling out families specifically.
What language would you recommend? The existing language or language that says family and community? I wasn't clear what you were advocating for.
Well, I was definitely advocating for families. I hear Patrick's concerns because I do think they are credible. However, if there's enough, you know, if the superintendent feels like the board gives enough cover and what is a viable, we trust you for, for that and are not going to, of course, always have your back if it's someone that's not in alignment with the direction. If we feel like that doesn't need to be spelled out, then, then I'm fine. But I do agree with Patrick's point in wanting to make sure that, that there are processes and, yes.
So Jenna, you're saying families and community?
Sure.
I agree with that.
I am for what says families and community partners just for safety of our students. I want to bring that up. I feel when it says community, I don't want unsafe people in our schools around our students.
I guess the, if we're, just a thought, Anna, which is, I think that's Dr. Roberts' job, is to determine what is a viable community partner and to have a process. And so I don't know how you, I just worry if you put safety in here, then it becomes, I don't know.
No, we don't have to put safety in here. Just how it is. But, I mean, the reason why I want to leave it with the community partners is the whole, I mean, to make sure we have that safety around the whole thing. We don't want just anybody to come in our schools. If I, I feel that if we just put community, it could just bring everybody. I mean, we trust Dr. Roberts to make it like the community partners. And I think if we just do community, I think that opens up something a little bit more viable. I don't know.
So just so I'm clear, you're recommending keeping the language, families and viable community partners?
Yes.
All right, so it sounds like we have three different ideas going. We have the existing language, families and viable community partners. We have a complete condensing down to just community. And then it sounds like a partial condensing down to family and community. So I'm hearing there's three different ideas. The existing language condensed down to family and community, condensed all the way down to community.
I like the existing first. What, the community, families and viable partners?
I'd go for existing.
Families and community.
Where are you at on this?
Either ones.
As long as family's in, I'm in. Marterano, you got thoughts on this?
I am okay with either
Me too.
Family and community or family viable community.
All right, which means we have a nice little even split.
I defer.
All right. And with that, that brings us right back to the original language. All right. And then, so with that complete, the only thing we hadn't discussed was the very last one. The superintendent shall not allow the social, emotional learning needs of adults and all students to be unaddressed. Everyone said, keep it, which means we are at
A.J.?
Yes.
I'm sorry to throw in, I would just like to add one modification to this to align with just proper terminology. It should say the social and emotional learning needs.
Yes. Anyone have, so I've seen people go both ways. Board, do you have a particular?
What do you use?
It can be social and emotional because S.E.L. covers it.
If I may?
Yeah.
Certainly, it can be social and emotional because the five tenets of socio-emotional learning will cover our ability to address social and emotional needs.
All right. Then I've got that tweak added in with no lack of consensus. All right.
Just one, sorry.
Yes.
Of adults, I'm just wondering if we mean of adults or if we mean staff and students? I just, I'm looking for language consistency and was of adults intentionally?
All right, so we have a recommended change from of adults to of staff. Board members, what say you?
I'm okay with staff.
I forget why we went with adults.
I don't know.
I don't know why.
And is there a risk or a significant difference between?
They are two very, very different groups. Adults is adults, staff is adults who are on your payroll essentially, or who are partners of yours.
Who are the adults that we're talking about? And I don't mean to ask a dumb question, but who are the adults that we're talking about that are in our buildings, that are not on our payroll, that we're worried about?
Well, they may not be in our bill, yeah.
The point is, they may not, all adult, parents are example of adults that are not staff.
The learning needs is the thing. We are not teaching the adults that are not on our, yeah.
You do educate adults. You educate people who are over the age of 18 in this district.
Okay.
You mean through the community ed program? Or you mean through all of our services and coaching?
You could be 18 and be a senior.
Oh.
Would that be in students?
Yeah, they'd be a student.
We address the social and emotional learning needs of our staff?
Sure.
Learning needs, though?
No, socio-emotional needs, certainly learning needs as well. And that includes learning needs as well. You know, I think we pride ourselves in continuous learning for every adult in the district, so yes.
Okay, I just, maybe I don't understand S.E.L. Doesn't it have five pillars, right? So I, we keep saying learning needs, and so I just want to make sure I actually understand. S.E.L. has five competencies.
Five competencies, that's correct, Madam Chair. And, and yes, the learning needs means that the onus is on us as we are implementing an S.E.L. curriculum with fidelity to make sure that there is improvement around learning of those competencies by the adults and, which is considered S.E.L.A., socio-emotional learning for adults. So yes, it encompassing learning needs not only for students but for staff as well.
I say staff because it doesn't sound like we do it for adults with, I hate the word fidelity, with zeal.
I would say staff as well. I think that's probably something we can measure. I'm not sure we can measure parents' social, emotional learning.
If you stick with adults, technically, that would be inclusive of your state legislature.
Staff is
See, not everybody got that. That didn't land for everybody.
So the, the recommendation on the table is staff?
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Stuff, keep stuff.
All right, so modify adults to staff. All right, so then that brings us to the conclusion of this. I want to describe, and so now there's one more step that I promised you. Once we work through all of those, even though I think it'd be mildly disastrous, there is the opportunity for a last minute addition. Going once, going twice. All right, so.
Well, the reason that, I'm kidding.
All right, so I promised there would be that opportunity at the end if somebody wanted, but I'm not hearing any. So that means where we are at is that you have, and I've updated the recap document live, so it is already accurate, that you have three draft goals that you are now formally passing on to your staff and five draft guardrails that you are formally passing on to your staff. They will create interims for interim goals. They'll come back with three interim goals for each goal. They'll come back with three interim guardrails for each guardrail. At that point, what you will do is you will look at those interims and you will answer this question. Are these a reasonable interpretation of the goal? Are they a reasonable interpretation of the guardrail? You are not answering the question, are these the interims that I like? Are these the interims I would choose? Are these the interims I think the community wants? None of those are what you are answering. They're answering what's predictive. You're determining, are these predictive metrics a reasonable interpretation of the goal and the guardrail? That is what will happen in the next step. Any questions about that is the next step. All right. Madam Chair, back to you.
Well, thank you, that's very exciting. I think we're all feeling great about the process. So thank you very much for taking us through that. We really appreciate it, A.J. Good? Okay, and Josie, thank you very much. Because you're just, everybody expects you to know all of the data right here in your head.
Well done.
So easily. So, thank you very much. We are going to just, we got about 10 minutes left. I think we're going to do an update that is going to be led by our board vacancy committee, which is Ms. Marterano, Ms. Knox and Ms. Alonso. And I think we're just looking for an update and conversation about next steps. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right.
Everyone, the, should have received an email from me with some documentation. But today at noon, I'm sorry, yesterday at noon was the deadline for applicant submissions. We received those submissions and Ms. Rosie has shared with you a shared folder with all of the documentation from the applicants. So if everyone can verify that they have that access by noon tomorrow, that would be ideal. And let Rosie know and make sure that you have that access to all of those documents. And I just want to make sure, is everyone hearing me okay? I know there were some concerns earlier.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So our immediate job is to review those applications. You've received an email from me with a form to fill out for each of the applicants. You'll be scoring the applicants based on the draft goals, the draft guardrails and the rubric that, in which they and, um, the rubric that, in which they spoke to our application questions. So we would like you to have that submitted, um, by end of day, the 28th. Is that correct? Yes, end of day of the 28th. The 29th will be the date that we will tally all of the applicant scores. I will identify, the committee will identify five, um, a maximum of five finalists, a minimum of three finalists. And we will contact those finalists. They will all receive the interview questions, um, in advance. And we will schedule interviews for April 3rd and 4th. Deliberation will take place, um, on April 4th, as well as announcement of our chosen candidate. The second link that you have in your email is in fact a list of questions and rubric. I would like to share that with, um, the board and to receive feedback. And, um, any questions or concerns? I will say that, um, we had a very long list of questions and we dwindled them down to truly identify a candidate, an applicant that would, um, represent District 4 and, um, be able to really represent the vision and values of the community, particularly District 4, and be someone who is collaborative and, um, understand the roles and the responsibilities of the board versus the superintendent, be able to engage our stakeholders, um, as well as be a leader that is focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, transparency, and one who is willing to challenge the status quo. Those are kind of the high-level, um, items. Jenna and Maria, what am I missing?
Did you send the? She did. Kim, we're just pulling up the-
Oh, I got it.
Sorry, we were just pulling up the-
Okay.
Uh, mine just opened up, sorry. So the sorry, the rubric?
So the first link, we're going to have two jobs as a board. The first thing that we need to do is score the applicants to identify our top five applicants. So the first link is a link for you to submit your scores by the end of day on the 28th. The second link is preparing us for our interviews on April 3rd and 4th. And these are interview questions as well as rubric. And just wanted to provide this draft to you, um, for feedback, comments, et cetera. But this is the, um, this is the draft question and rubric that is being submitted by the committee for your approval.
Is it the interview question?
Mm-hmm.
And then in your, in your docu, in your folder?
Yep.
Then there's a link where-
Can you turn on your mic, please?
Um, I was sort of just showing, Anna, the, the links, so that there's two different documents.
Um, how much time are we giving to each candidate for the process?
One hour.
I mean, in and out, we're scheduling an hour, so 55 minutes total. So we'll have an interview at 5, 6 and 7, I think, right, one day? And then the next day, 5, 6, and the thought is we would deliberate after that?
Yeah, we could probably do, um, you know, 10 minutes in between. I think we're scheduled from 5 until 9 each day. Is that correct, Rosie?
I apologize, what was the question?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, we're scheduled from 5 until 8, so you are right, Jenna, I apologize. We will not have time to add in a 10-minute break in between. So yeah, it will be 55 minutes, 5-minute transition.
And our goal is to over-communicate that. So obviously candidates will know the questions in advance and that they'll be responsible for timing. And I think we, um, like, Kim was gonna sort of be the timekeeper and making sure that, um, we, we give everyone every opportunity to get through all the questions and have time at the end for them to ask us questions.
Just a note, I'm, uh, landing in Des Moines at 4:53 on Thursday. So I will get here as fast as I possibly can. I know we have two interviews that day, but-
He was just joined by Zoom.
I will join by Zoom as soon as we land, and then I'll join in person as soon as I can get here.
I think we visualize like a round robin question situation too.
Obviously in person.
Yes, uh, Kim, we didn't talk about if candidates were unable to be here in person. We were all gonna be here in this room in person.
I will not.
We know you, we already knew about you, but I don't think we talked about candidate as optional for not to be here in person.
Yes, and I have heard from one candidate, um, who has requested, you know, if, if this candidate is, um, navigates to the interview round, they've requested, um, a virtual interview. And I did not see any problem with that, is we have teams that can facilitate that. If everyone is amenable.
No, I think, I think I don't know. I think it's also worth noting, just making sure that we are, uh, clearly communicating to all candidates that it's important to be here in person, obviously. Things come up, but this is not a virtual meeting, board.
Thank you.
I would agree with Jenna.
Thank you for your grace this evening while I am virtual.
This, um, this looks really good. Thank you so much to the committee for all of the hard work. Really appreciate it, it's very exciting.
I will say we worked very hard and went back and forth on the questions and feel like we were pretty thoughtful, but, um, so.
Yeah, and maybe just if anybody has any suggestions, just quickly relate those to, relay those to Kim. But thank you, board colleagues. Anything else?
I think one other thing we talked about at the end, Kim, and was the fact that we were conflicted in live streaming them in real time because that would sort of allow people to watch other people's interviews and kind of prepare. And so our hope was to tape them and post them all in the end after, obviously people can sit here if they want to. Right? But we just felt like live streaming it for those people who went on Wednesday was kind of unfair for those who go on Thursday with the same questions. Everyone will have the questions in advance, but kind of watching the answers and that, to me, would feel unfair if I was going on Thursday.
Thank you for recalling that, Jenna. Is everyone okay with us recording and posting after the selection process has been, well, after the selection process has been made? And Rosie did confirm with me that we can live stream the deliberation portion on Thursday after all of the interviews are completed. Is that still accurate, Rosie?
Yes, I double-checked with Kyle.
And we'll still-
Thank you both.
And we'll still post both days.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
It's exciting, looks great. Uh, anything else, Kim?
I will say thank you to, um, A J and team, as well as other board members who attended our session on Saturday. It was well-attended and, um, I'm grateful for the opportunity for our community to learn more about the work of the board and, um, goals and guardrails and all that we do as a board. So thank you.
All right, team, look at that. 12 minutes before nine o'clock, so that's right. Um, okay, everybody have a good night and we will see you next week on the second, right? That's next week. Okay, thank you.